Call the meeting to order.
The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community, with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Don Kapoff, chaplain with the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Great evening. If you could remain standing and we'll do the pledge of allegiance afterwards.
You please pray with me. Good evening, holy Father. There's three things that I want to look up before you tonight. First is that you would continue to be with Steve Schwartz's family, that you would continue to wrap your arms around them, that they would sense your presence, that they would feel your healing, that you continue to be their Lord, their Savior. Thank you for being with them. Thank you for being their God right now during this time. The second, Father, is for tonight. We thank you for the City Council that is here before us. We know that they're honest and they're ethical, and they care about the city. We ask that you would guide these proceedings, that your wisdom would be here, and that you'd keep, keep the temperaments low, keep people civil, and that you would continue to have your way amongst everybody here. And the third thing, Father, is we thank you for being able to call San Clemente home, to be able to grow up here, to raise our children here, to see our grandchildren grow up here. We consider that a blessing. We thank you for it. We ask that you would continue to allow our town to be safe, free of tragedy, that we could look to you and thank you for all the good that you do for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
If you could face the flag, turn over your heart, and speak after me. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Councilmember Hamm?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Mayor Potem Bane?
Here.
First item on the agenda is a toll road update.
Common cards?
Yes.
Mr. Bieber?
I had the surprise misfortune of seeing Councilwoman Kathy Ward at the Republican Party Dinner sponsored by the Orange County Lincoln Club on Saturday night. I was very surprised because I recall her waving around ads in the SC Times about the Lincoln Club and that it was a pawn of the toll roads, and that people who were receiving support by the Lincoln Club were puppets of the TCA. It was fascinating during the election Kathy Ward sought out a young reporter from the OC Weekly and planted the most vile story against myself and Mayor Potem Dan Bane as being a puppet of the TCA. Throughout the campaign, she warned everybody that she was the only person that could be trusted to represent the city. So what the unprecedented thing happened with the OC Weekly is they wrote a 2,000-page expose on Kathy Ward detailing how every part of the original story that she fed was a lie. And in fact, that there were so many lies, they couldn't even cover them in 2,000 words. One of the most bizarre things that you said that was a lie in attempting to smear me was to say that I was college roommates with a board member of the TCA, the mayor of Lake Forest, Scott Voits. So when I saw you at this dinner, I pressed you on this, and you gave me your back hand. And as you sat there at the table, I said, "Councilwoman Ward, would you like to be Supervisor Don Wagner?" Because Scott Voits actually works for him. He's his district representative. And so Scott Voits, or you turn around and you go, "Supervisor Wagner, so nice to meet you. I'm very pleased with your vote on the TCA." And had I been on the TCA, I would have voted the same way. The point is, you're not on the TCA. And why is that? Well, in part of the expose that the OC Weekly did on you, and people may not recall this, you stepped off the TCA. And your exact quote here, when you stepped off and you nominated Dan Bane to be on the TCA, you said, "I've been on the TCA for years. I think it would be a good strategy to change faces, and I'd like to step off," is just that Dan Bane do that. You even voted for the guy you told everybody would be the puppet, you voted for him and nominated him to be on the board. Why? Because your chum then filed ethics complaint against him, FPPC complaints against him to hamstring him and hobble his effectiveness on the board. So here's the funny thing. After you did that and the whole shenanigans, he thanked you for stepping off the board. Your exact words five minutes later were, "I'm not stepping off." It is amazing how pathological you are with lying. 2,000-word expose on how you fed this story to a reporter, complete lies, focusing mainly on how you're going to be the hero and represent the city, and you stepped off with the whole plan of hamstringing our representative.
Thank you, Mr. Bieber. So I'll give a quick toll road update. First part's the litigation side of things. As I said last time, the city has, along with the Reserve Maintenance Corporation, filed a motion for summary judgment related to whether the TCA has the legislative authority to build a toll road through the City of San Clemente. That motion's going to be heard now on August 15th. It was continued from July 29th by the Courts on Motion. We're also going to be filing motions for judgment related to three causes of action brought by the Reserve in the city. Those motions will be heard in October, on October 18th, so we'll give updates as those motions are heard and decided. Last week was a TCA Board meeting. And I think, as most of you know, I represent the San Juan Hills TCA. We had a number of items on the agenda, and because there was some misinformation that was disseminated after that, I want to correct the record. During that meeting, we heard or considered the budget for the San Juan Hills TCA. That budget was approved. I voted for that budget. And I want to be very clear to everyone in the audience that that budget did not approve the extension of the 241. In fact, it was not a part of it. That's a completely separate agency that deals with the TCA. Nor did that budget approve any loans to the Foothill Eastern TCA for any extensions of the 241. In fact, San Juan Hills has never loaned any money to the Foothill Eastern Transportation Quarter Agency. The only loan that I'm aware of was from the Foothill Eastern Transportation Quarter Agency to San Juan Hills. So I think it's clear that, you know, we're up here as a body trying to do the best we can to fight the toll road, all of us, and, you know, it does not help our cause to be spreading misinformation like that. Councilmember Ferguson unfortunately had to work that day, and in the interest of transparency, I am the alternate for the Foothill Eastern Transportation Quarter Agency, but I could not act as an alternate in that capacity because of complaints that the city's received that I have a conflict of interest because of my lawsuits against the toll road, as ironic as that is. But because of those complaints, I did not step in until the FPPC issues a formal opinion as to whether I have a conflict or not, to protect myself and the city as well, so that any of the decisions I make can come back on myself or the city. So I want to be clear, I didn't not participate in that meeting because I didn't want to. I very much wanted to because of the advice that I received. So I wanted to clear that up. Again, we as a body are against any of the proposals through town and are fighting as one to prevent that from happening.
Mr. Mayor Potem, could I please just add one thing? There was a hearing yesterday. One element of the city's lawsuit against TCA challenges the continuation of development impact fees charged on our community, where the fees might originally have been legitimate because they included us in an area benefit serviced by a Belt Route, so to speak. Now that TCA has formally terminated the extension of the toll road south of San Clemente, it doesn't make any sense anymore that residents and builders and developers in our area benefit continue to pay fees when there's no denominator to offset them. So yesterday, there was a hearing on a pre-trial motion by TCA called a demur to kick out those causes of action. The court ruled that those causes of action were in fact timely, which was good news for us. We thought that you couldn't bring them until the time was right. But the court also held that there needed to be somebody with greater injury to be able to invalidate those fees. So what we'll be doing is looking at stakeholders in the community, people who are having to pay those fees, and recruiting them to join the city in that challenge, because then that will take care of that second concern of the court. The challenge is ready to go. They would simply just have to sign on to the city's lawsuit, and then it will be off to the races again on that fee. So a bit of recruitment. If anybody's levied a fee at the building permit counter for toll roads, we'd be happy to have them join in that protest and help them see how to do it.
Next is an update on the homeless issue.
So I have a number of common cards. So first is going to be Jordan Barton, followed by Rick Lefler, and then Jim Bieber. So if you could form up by the podium, be ready to speak. Jordan?
Hi, my name's Jordan Barton. And so I've been relegated to live in the city lot for the homeless the last few days. And I've noticed some things, and I wanted to give you some insight as someone who's there. I wanted to give you insight into how they handle this situation in Tulsa, because I saw them go from having a lot of crime on the streets to making those streets much, much more safer with a plan. And that's to, if you do have a homeless shelter, or if you do have a lot, the last thing you want is to have a place that's fomenting crime, where people can just do meth or do drugs and then do whatever they want all day, which is they're not looking for a job, they're not working, they're just doing drugs, they're just causing crimes. You don't want to foment that. You don't ideally want a place with that. Ideally, you want a place like Tulsa has in its, at least Salvation Army in this respect. Of course, you'd go with your, whatever religious organization you wanted, where if people are staying there or staying on the lot, they're either, you know, they meet with a caseworker once a week, they're either looking for a job, or they're getting mental health services because they're so mentally messed up that they need it. And then you have a legal, I believe, a legal reason there, just like Tulsa. I don't know if this has been challenged in federal court or not, but you have a legal reason there. These people who are doing drugs or doing meth are not meeting with their case managers, they're not interested in working. Those people are back on the streets, and those people will end up in jail, or they'll end up living, moving out of town, because meeting with a case manager, looking for work, or making your mental health appointments, that's too hard for somebody who's doing meth all the time or doing drugs. That's not their lifestyle. And right now, I think you're making the wrong decision with that. You have great energy in this room. I'm so grateful for the chance to speak. San Clemente is known as a religious mission, and I think that the heart and soul of San Clemente needs a place for community members who are kicked out of their house or whatnot that are already members of the community, to have a legitimate way to get back on their feet if they're working or getting mental health services in a very... And this way, you provide safety for the rest of the city because you're not fomenting crime. Because right now, when you go in there, honestly, it's a bit like a prison where... And this is what Tulsa didn't want. This is the big thing. This is one of the big things. You have these ultra hardcore prisoner types that are maybe doing meth and that, and then you have people maybe like me who are ultra disabled. I have autism, and I'm pretty weak in regards. And the one just picks on the other. So you're not only fomenting crime, but you're fomenting this really ugly scenario where the most dangerous pick on the weakest. And that's the stuff I want to bring to your attention. I hope it helps you guys. Great energy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Next is Rick Lefler, followed by Jim Bieber, and then Kirsty O'Neill.
Great, great lead-in. First of all, here's a copy of LA Times from Father's Day. I lived in LA and worked in LA for five decades. I want to tell you, LA Times is one of the most liberal rags that there could be. And the front of the California section is, "Welcome to Garcetti's LA. We're seeing heaps of trash, hordes of rats, and very little leadership." The reason I'm bringing this up, if the Times is getting in on Garcetti, the mayor, we know it's a big issue. And so leadership is the key, and that's why you guys have to take the leadership. I'm going to blow through this stuff real fast because I'm kind of confused here about the Pico lot there. Led to believe that the city manager is in charge of supervising that or managing that. Is that true? Okay, it's true. So a security guard with a clipboard is not managing, and that's what we have right now. What is this campground? Is it a temporary shelter? The police are under the opinion that it's just a lot where we store people, and they have no jurisdiction in there unless they're called. They don't do any supervision, they don't do any vetting. It's just a lot where we put people. I think that needs to be changed. Other cities actually do security in their temporary shelters or temporary lots and have done that. Santa Ana, when they opened up their temporary lot next to the old City Hall, they had security there. They did vetting. Laguna Beach calls them alternative sleeping locations. Is that what this is? And if that's what this is, what is that exactly? Is it a shelter? Is it or not? Laguna is implementing or getting ready to implement security at their alternative sleeping location. They're going to search people before they go in, so they can't bring in drugs or weapons. Sounds like a great idea. Maybe it's something we ought to think about. And this is administrating for not only the safety of the citizens, but also the safety of the people there, just like the gentleman spoke. I mean, it's perfect. Here, you know, I'm babbling on, you don't have to listen to me, but here's a guy that's living there. He knows you need security. You need that. We need to do something. It's a shit show there right now. We don't need to have that. When are we going to start doing something about it? It's a good start, but we must continue in the direction to keep this as a good facility until we get our permanent facility, which is going to make the C-Summit people really, really happy. We need to get the sheriffs involved in this, however that is. I'm sure they'll be happy to do it if we give them the direction and authority to go in there and do something about it. We need to stop worrying about lawsuits. Hey, Judge Carter got replaced. How about that? You guys filed a suit with other cities? He got replaced. That's to send a message to you that it wasn't quite as restrictive as we thought. It seems like maybe we are doing a good job. So let's go in there and continue this. Mayor Potem Bane brought up a point about Martin versus Boise, where there was times where you possibly could arrest somebody who's sleeping on the street. Could that be the loophole that the court put in? If you don't qualify for the shelter because you either don't want to be there, or you don't want to hear the rules, we can arrest you? Maybe. I mean, maybe that's why they put that loophole in. Who knows? But the fact is, we need to hammer this now. We can't just let it go on as a shit show. We've got to make it a shelter and have rules and put it in place now.
Thank you, Rick. Next is Mr. Bieber, but real quick, the alternative sleeping place is their indoor shelter. That's what they call it. So, Mr. Bieber?
Thank you. Quite a sizable crowd tonight. I don't think I've seen a crowd this big since we had the canceled City Council meeting with the absence of Kathy Ward and Chris Hamm, in which an impromptu City Hall Town Hall was held, where the two remaining leaders took questions from the audience and responded to the citizens' inquiries about what's going on. People were flipping out. People had been flipping out for a long time about the homeless invasion of our city and the problem with that. One of the great things that happened a couple of months ago is the previous sheriff gave a, it was about a 15-minute presentation about the law and what they were legally able to do with the homeless. And he described Boise's decision, and he said, "You know, we just cannot arrest people. We cannot enforce this camping ordinance until we have a shelter." It was so crystal clear and so informative, and everybody who was rational got it. And I stress that, everybody who was rational got that and understood that. So what is really weird is when KFI and John and Ken got on this, that they received an email at 1:00 in the morning from Kathy Ward. And usually, when people write at 1:00 in the morning, it might be a sign of something. She said, "The Orange County sheriffs have stopped and refused to uphold our ordinances." She went on to say, "It wasn't until the sheriffs wussed out on us that our program stopped working." So what she's implying, because as I mentioned before, any rational person understood what the previous sheriff was saying, is they couldn't enforce it because we didn't have a Band-Aid. But she was happy to disparage the people who were putting their lives on the line, who were trying to do the best they can, and calling them wussies. And we could ask, just off the top of the head, I know he won't respond, we could ask the legal counsel, what would happen to the city had the sheriffs started arresting everybody and enforcing the ordinance in light of what the sheriff said? How many millions of dollars would we be facing lawsuits then? Everybody wants just a shred of decency on this and honesty. Everybody wants just a shred of decency on this and honesty and sameness. The insane part is, and a lot of people know him, an activist, Tony Rubelino, came here over a year ago because he was freaked out because homeless were walking around with machetes. He asked the sheriff about it. He says, "Yeah, technically, you can bring a machete anywhere." So he brought one here, and he said, "Hey, they're walking around." Chris Hamm made a joke about it. Everybody understood. 10 months later, Kathy Ward, you filed a police report against him claiming that you were suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder, saying that you got a physical reaction 10 months later because of this citizen. You spent more time meeting with the police trying to get this citizen arrested than you did on this problem. Now, here's the funny part, is in the SC Times, you made the statement that the police report was confidential. Well, it's been blasted all over town. Here's a copy of it right here. And if you call up the records department of the sheriff, they'll say that's a lie too. I have never met an elected official who lies as much as you do. It's bizarre, and you are a bizarre person.
Thank you, Mr. Bieber. Next is Kirsty O'Neil, followed by Susan Smith, and then Donna Vedrine, Vedryin, if I mispronounced that, I apologize. So Neil.
Hi, my name is Kirsty O'Neil, and I'm a new resident to San Clemente. We are destined for disaster, and here's why. After eight days of assisting a homeless battered woman, I know firsthand what this walk is like. I know the dollars spent, the phone calls made and left unanswered, the doors slammed, the people who laughed, and the hours and energy spent advocating for her daily survival, not even touching on her long-term solutions. These are the hurdles faced by a woman who isn't persistently homeless, addicted, or mentally ill. This is a vulnerable individual with a basic education, no support system, limited to no resources, and has reached a point of hopelessness. As a victim of domestic violence, she's found herself and her two young children immediately impacted by homelessness. Our common response is, there are services. I've said it myself. In reality, this is not true. This woman found herself in our city lot where drugs and violence harmed her to the point of evacuating in a panic. She had a limited window from being rescued by civic heroes and falling to a point of no return, thanks to a failing and broken system. So that's why I'm here. I caution you, after 20 citizens, $500 of private money, $550 roughly from FAM, 44 agencies contacted, this woman still has nowhere to go. This is the system that you guys are facing. We can't trust any of them. So what is my point? I hope that you guys are going to be very cautious in who you invite to work on our small shelter and perhaps a regional shelter, God forbid. I spent two days sitting outside of Anaheim Shelter that's right next to the Salvation Army Rehab Center where we've been trying to get her in. And the characters that are coming in and out are frightening. This is where we're asking a battered woman to stay in a shelter with people like that? The system is broken. She has countless social workers that are not helping her. I have calls in, more than 20 people that I'm waiting for a return call from. The system is broken, and I ask you guys to please use caution in who you trust, find out who their financial connections are, because people are making money off of somebody like this poor girl and our two children who are homeless. Thank you.
Kirsty. Next is Susan Smith, followed by Donna Vedryin and James Bartlett.
Hello, everyone. We understand that we had an emergency situation with the homeless camping out at the beach, and we needed to clear the beaches before Memorial Day weekend and the summer begins. However, it is vitally important for the economic viability of the city that you guys adopt a more long-term solution rather than a short-term ordinance, which has only created additional safety, environmental, economic impacts, and they will gravely impact our city for years to come if it does not change. In case you're not familiar with the City Municipal Code, I'm sure you are, but let me just remind you, I'm going to read a section from it. 17.56.100, Emergency Overlay Shelter Overlay District. A, Purpose and Intent. The purpose of the SB 2 overlay designation is to identify those areas where emergency shelters are allowed by right subject to development and operation standards. The SB 2 overlay meets the requirements of state law by designating specific areas where emergency shelters, also referred to as homeless shelters, may be established and operated by right to meet the shelter needs based on homeless population estimates established by current reliable information in the city's general plan housing element. The goals for the areas with its designation are as follows. I'm going to skip item one because I'm going to go to the more important, more pertinent issues at this time. Number two, to protect public safety, maintain land use compatibility, and preserve property values, neighborhood quality, and economic vitality while addressing an identified humanitarian need. Number three, to locate such facilities to the maximum extent possible close to public transportation, public and community services, near job centers, away from residential neighborhoods, schools, and parks. Let me just remind you that you guys have placed a temporary shelter against state law code right next to neighborhoods, schools, and parks. So as we go here today, we're going to hear a lot of stories. From the homeless man, you hear how homeless people are beating other homeless people. You've placed these people, you've got city park for children not being used, you're paying additional money for security, and you're telling people, hey, if you get abused, if you get accosted, there's nothing we can do about it. They're mentally disabled. So for the future of our city and our economic viability, please focus on your long-term efforts and correct your mistakes.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Next is Donna Vedryin, followed by James Bartlett and Michelle Carney.
Hello, my name is Donna Vedrine, and I own a home and am raising a family and own a business in San Clemente. So I would like to express how I feel about the homeless in San Clemente. As San Clementans, we can help the less fortunate and homeless individuals and families instead of creating obstacles and making things more difficult for the women, the men, and the families. Those with jobs, resources, and homes can contribute to helping others living with no jobs, no homes, and sometimes disabled by mental problems and addiction issues. In San Clemente, we understand we need a place for the homeless to sleep and receive assistance. We have churches, nonprofits, individuals that want to provide assistance, but we need leadership and structure to provide these services in a way that makes sense, both ethically and financially. Let's work with our city leaders in providing solutions to our problems with homelessness. If we problem solve and act together, we can accomplish more. I ask that everyone here tonight contribute in a positive way with time, caring, financial resources, supporting our city council, our churches, and our nonprofits. As a person of faith, I know this is what our Creator asks from us, love and care for each other and our community. Let's not create more problems and divisions, but work together.
Thank you. Next is James Bartlett, followed by Michelle Carney.
Mayor Proton Bane, council members, thank you for the time. Much like everybody else that lives in the Sea Summit community over there, we're obviously acutely aware of not only the homeless issue within the city, but also next to our community. I'm not going to go through all the codes and everything else that's up there. I'd like to give you guys kind of an insight due to where we live, uniquely specific to the encampment, where we get kind of a bird's eye view of everything going on. I'd like to also thank Jordan for coming up and speaking and giving us some insight to what's actually going down or happening in the encampment. It ranges from the, I guess, if you want to call it whimsical, we've been serenaded in the morning from singing, guitar playing. Trombone the other day was what kind of woke us up, which isn't the end of the world, but is still a nuisance, if you want to call it that. It runs to the more dramatic. I know that there was an issue on the trail that the sheriffs had to respond to, where they had to physically subdue one of the homeless people. Saturday afternoon, we watched, as we heard the argument start, because we can hear a lot of the argument that goes down in the encampment, an argument broke out between two of the homeless. I don't know if it was our personal security that called, somebody down in the encampment. The sheriffs showed up promptly, they went in, talked to the individual, then the individual decided they weren't going to comply. The sheriffs had to physically restrain the person, walk them out to the car. I'm sure they brought them in. And I'd like to thank the sheriffs personally for their approach and handling of this situation while they were out there. But that seems to be the consistent pattern of what's happening over the encampment. And not having been down there personally, hearing what Jordan had to say sheds a lot of light on what's going on in there, at least from our point of view. And like I said, we can basically hear a lot of the conversations when the voices are raised when they're there with what's happening. There seems to be a lot of agitation, a lot of confrontations that are happening. My concern was that the homeless issue is, first of all, never going to go away. And I realize this is a problem for all the cities involved. It's a huge problem for our city, and I know there's no easy fix to it. There's no easy fix for the homeowners, there's no easy fix for the city council, there's no easy fix for our city in general. I've heard rumors that other cities were busing homeless in because they knew we had a temporary shelter. They can make it not their problem, we'll leave them down in San Clemente, let San Clemente deal with them. We've got to find a way to kind of get past the Band-Aid fix and find a better way to, as Jordan said, get them the help they need, put them in something that's a more permanent shelter in an area that's designed to be a permanent shelter for them, and find a way to get them back on their feet, into jobs, so they can be self-sufficient, and maybe take a few less homeless off the street for us. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing, but we've got to find a better way.
Mr. Bartlett. Next is Michelle Carney. This is the last card for this homeless update.
Hello, my name is Michelle Carney. I'm a resident of San Juan Capistrano. I've volunteered a lot in San Clemente, and I've worked in San Clemente. I just wanted to say thank you to Donna Vedrine for speaking up on the positiveness that we do need to realize that homelessness is never something you can actually handle. It's one of those things that as a society, we can kind of contribute towards, or we can have the negative repercussion of it. Today, I just wanted to say, of course, thank you to City Hall for actually addressing it, and it is one of those things that, it does require a lot of patience. I just wanted to say thank you for taking that on. And then also the community, I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done. I must say, this is one of the communities that I feel totally connected to. The homelessness, I've volunteered a lot for it. I've known people in the battered women shelters, I've known people in homeless shelters, and I've dealt a lot with it when I was in my younger years. It's one of those things that I feel like it will never be overcome unless it gets to the point where people understand the work ethic. And I believe San Clemente has a lot of that, which is very frustrating because I know that a lot of people here have been affected by the homeless. And this is one of those communities that they actually address it. You all talk about it on a daily basis, or if not a daily basis, every week. And I just wanted to say thank you to the community for actually taking the time and addressing it. But once again, I do want to state the fact that I live in San Juan Capistrano, and I do not live in San Clemente, simply because I cannot afford it. And I know I'm not on the streets right now, but I'm just at the point in my life where I look at the homeless and I say, "I wish I could show you my work ethic." And maybe you're going through something at this point in your life where you just can't overcome it. But I'll tell you what, every single day, I work and I contribute to my community. And I just wish the next 10 years that we'll stay in San Clemente and we don't focus on other things. It is so difficult to deal with the homeless because there's other problems that are in our society that we do not know how to handle. And every day, I mean, I face whatever I have to do like everybody else here in this community, but we go on and on. As far as affordable living, that would be my suggestion, and not a shelter. Help out the community members that do contribute. Homelessness is one of those things that you can never fix. All you can do is try to work as a human. There's people that do not want to work, and yes, that is an issue. But at the same time, stay positive because it's one of those things, if you are not, it just brings you down. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next is Steve Amen. Hi, Steve.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to, I live directly across the street from the homeless shelter. My house has a bird's eye view, if you will, of the facility. And last week, I wanted to share some of the experiences that I've had. I was on my balcony reading a book in the evening, and, you know, these people are mentally ill, they're confrontational, they start yelling, "F this, F that." These guys are fighting with each other. The monitor, the person that's there, does nothing. It's extremely disturbing. And we're located very close. As Susan mentioned, it's just the inappropriate location for this. It's too close to residents. And it's not fair that the burden of this would fall, you know, there's about 12 of us sitting right there, looking right at, very close, we can hear everything, we can see everything. It's just not fair. You're putting too much burden on too few people. If, you know, if I had to sell my house right now, I'd be screwed. I couldn't sell it. I wouldn't buy it, you wouldn't buy it. It's just not right. The other thing is, just outside the encampment, on the sidewalk, you see constantly, you see people loitering right there. I have a relative who's an ex-addict. He sits here and says, "Man, these guys are doing drug deals all day long." The guy comes in, there's people making money, they stand there on the sidewalk, nobody does anything, they're doing their drug transactions. It's just the, you know, and it's, and you could, I mean, you could throw a rock and hit the park right across the street. It's just the wrong location. Now, I know that you're planning to relocate it, but what scares the hell out of me is that when you wrote that ordinance, you read that ordinance, it is not a temporary ordinance. It's not. And that's what's frightening to me. It's the wrong place, and I just want to share that with the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Real quick, just, Steve, just to let you know, tonight, we're actually having an agenda item to sunset that a year from now, so it's not unlimited.
So, the updates. Scott, can you give an update on status of litigation?
Yeah, the status of litigation is that there were two interim victories on the city side in the case. In the first decision made by the court last week, the motion of the plaintiffs to disqualify the Joint Defense Counsel Jones Day was defeated. And so Jones Day, as we contemplated, as they contemplated, will be available to litigate the case. They're using nationally acclaimed First Amendment appellate expert in their Washington, DC office, who's done a great job. There's also a joint defense agreement, so that six cities, including three who are not even named in the lawsuit, are helping in equal shares to pay the city of San Clemente's defense in that lawsuit. The other concern that we'd raised in a motion with the court was that Judge Carter, due credit to all he's done to facilitate the outcomes in North County, we did not think was well-suited to our case, given his rapport and background and access to information that he's had directly and personally with the plaintiffs in our lawsuit. In hearing that motion, the court agreed with the city that our case ought to be assigned to a judge other than Judge Carter, so that assignment was made late Friday.
Thank you. And then last week, Councilwoman Ferguson and I hosted a homelessness town hall with the agreement from our co-council members and support, and we had a great turnout. I would say, what, 250 to 300 people, thereabouts? Had a number of panelists, had a lot of information shared, a lot of questions answered. I'll just reiterate for... I'll just reiterate for folks that weren't able to make it, the questions that we did not answer, and even those that we did answer, will be posted at some point on the city website, along with a video that was taken that evening, so that if you want to watch the homelessness town hall, you're able to watch that. Later tonight, just to address some of the comments we heard, we are going to consider additional rules and how we enforce those rules through misdemeanor otherwise. So if you want to hear that, stick around and we'll discuss that item. The deputies, as far as I'm aware, have full authority to go into the encampment and to enforce all the rules and in fact have been encouraged to do so. James, do you want to hit on that?
Yes, they have been. We do have some concerns about Fourth Amendment rights that the Sheriff's Department and their counsel and the city attorney and I have discussed, and so we're continuing to work through those Fourth Amendment issues. We also do have outreach workers there, caseworkers there from Mercy House. We do have mental health workers from the county coming to visit. We've also made contact with a group called U.S. Vets, who's going to come in and interview some of the residents to see if there's any veterans housing opportunities available to residents there, to some of the campers. We've had one camper relocated to permanent supportive housing. We have another one in the process doing paperwork to be relocated. So, and the homeless liaison deputy, Deputy Zill, is spending time there and, you know, we're working through. And this is, this is not a shelter, it's a campground, so it's different than what Laguna Beach has and their alternative sleeping program.
That's all I have. All right.
Okay. Next is a presentation of a proclamation to Neil Barbinell in recognition and appreciation for 28 years of exemplary service as a retired senior volunteer patrol member.
Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
So I get the honor of presenting Neil with this commendation from the City Council of San Clemente for providing 28 years of exemplary volunteer service for the people of San Clemente, and by so doing, wish him continued success and prosperity as he enters the next chapter of his life. And on behalf of the city council as a whole, we just want to thank you for all of your efforts over the past 28 years. And hopefully you'll do us the honor of taking a picture with us and then letting us know about your experiences with the RSVP. So thank you so very much for all your service.
Thank you. There we go. Why don't you get in the picture with me?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be down here, we'll get maybe behind you if you want to stand up front and we'll, uh...
I'm hard to hear.
So you want to stand down here and we'll hop.
Okay.
Yes, fine, perfect.
Right here?
All right. How about this? Do I get a kiss too?
You want me to write you a Christmas card?
I love the suggestion.
Neil, do you want to say a few words?
As you know, 28 years and 11,500 hours. Don't I look it? I want to thank the city council so much for recognizing what all of us will be doing someday with our beautiful friends in the blue uniforms. We love our work, as you know, and I can honestly say that we're probably one of the oldest volunteer groups in the city of Los Angeles. What's wrong? Freudian slip. San Clemente. We're almost going 40 years with the city. I think it's something, we had one member that's still with us in the original group. I think he's, Jim Lusk has been with us 38 years, but he's not in good health. But I love my work, I love the city, and I love RSVP. And I just wanted to thank one person in particular. When the city took over the RSVP program, we inherited an employee by the name of Joanne Thordell. She is our new city coordinator. I gave her that name. And she's the lady that takes care of all of our miscellaneous things, keeps our group moving, and also gets our lunches ready once a month. That's the big thing. I don't know where you're at, Hannah, but thank you, my dear. And I do know that I do have a free time. I think that I'm going to run for president of the United States. If I get this many votes, I'd be happy as hell. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and I'll be around, talk to you all.
So, president, you really are a glutton for punishment, and you do like attention, so...
I gotta go to the White House.
Yeah, well, if you run for president, this many people will probably never clap for you ever again, so just be careful.
Thanks a lot.
So I'd like to invite up Hannah Carter, next. Hannah, it's a tough act to follow, but we're gonna try. So I wanted to present this certificate of recognition to Hannah Carter in recognition of achieving the Girl Scout Gold Award for implementing a recycling program at Shorecliffs Middle School. There's a short little blurb here, if you'll bear with me, I want to read it to everyone. Hannah's project benefited the Capistrano Unified School District and the city of San Clemente and the environment. The project traditioned from a basic recycling program to an all-inclusive waste stream diversion program that included traditional recyclables as well as food waste generated from the school's kitchen and student lunches. Hannah's ability to work with government and special district agencies to implement a successful and sustainable project is a testament to her leadership skills and her dedication. Shorecliffs Middle School, 750 students learned to sort and recycle food waste, proving that students can and will recycle to divert food waste from the landfills. The Capistrano Unified School District has agreed to implement the food waste diversion program district-wide, which will impact and change the behavior of more than 50,000 students across the district, thereby helping all cities comply with AB 1826 legislation. Middle School? Wow. You'll be, you'll be getting our jobs very soon. Congratulations. You guys want to get a quick picture? You want to take a quick picture again? All right. Stand, stand down here and we'll hop in. There we go, I'll get behind as well.
My name is Hannah Carter and I'm with Girl Scout Troop 1510. I would like to thank the city of San Clemente for funding my grant proposal, which allowed me to start the recycling program at Shorecliffs Middle School. I'm very excited to report that CUSD is looking to implement a mixed and organics recycling program across each of its 51 school sites, representing over 54,000 students, who will be recycling every school day. I'm currently finishing up my Sea Scout Quartermaster Award, where I am developing marketing materials for elementary, middle school, and high school sites to help roll out the program district-wide in the fall. I would also like to personally thank my two city staff advisors who helped so much to bring this program to life. Thank you Cynthia Mallett and Dana McIntosh. I would like to present both of them with, I have two gold award pins for them, and I would really like to say thank you to the both of them. I don't think that they're here tonight, but I will make sure that they will get to them.
Next is a presentation of a certificate of recognition to the city by Brett Barbara, Municipal Water District of Orange County Board President, for the city's outstanding participation in the 2019 Weyland National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation and Weyland Foundation's Orange County Breakaway Competition.
Just one correction, Brett could not make it tonight, so I am here instead. I don't look like a Brett. Megan Y. Schneider, I'm the Division 7 representative for the Municipal Water District of Orange County, and we have Steve Creach from the Weyland Foundation.
Good evening, members of the council. On behalf of the Weyland Foundation and our national partners, we're honored to be here today in the city of San Clemente to recognize and commemorate the efforts of the city of San Clemente for water conservation, its commitment to water quality and sustainability for future generations. The Weyland Foundation started the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation over 10 years ago with about five mayors in South Florida, and it's now grown on an epic scale. We had residents from over 3,000 cities take part this year in the challenge. Nationally, San Clemente finished 15th in its population category, but first in Orange County. And for those of you that don't know or who would like to participate next year, the challenge is a friendly competition between cities to see who can be the most water-wise. But it's more than just about saving water, it's about looking at water as a global resource, how we use it, how we sustain it. They're not making any more of it, and we need to take good care of it. So I do have our great partner, Metropolitan Water District of Orange County, as you heard, Director Megan Y. Schneider and Public Affairs Manager Tiffany Baca are here to talk about our breakaway challenge, which is specific to Orange County, and we have some pretty neat things to share with you.
Thank you, Steve. So I'm really happy to be here for many reasons. I have the honor and privilege of being elected by our community to represent South Orange County on the Municipal Water District of Orange County Board. And we are the retail wholesaler, so we import the water from Northern California and the Colorado River Aqueduct, which then helps supply South Orange County. And unfortunately, unlike our counterparts in North County, we don't have a lot of local supply, and so imported water is something that's very important to us. And this challenge, the breakaway challenge that Steve referenced, is one that started three years ago. And we're very lucky in South Orange County to have one, two out of three years. And so the first year was Laguna Beach, the second year was Westminster, and this year, San Clemente took the top challenge winner, and it was down to the wire. And so San Clemente had almost 2,700 pledges, which is going to save over 9 million gallons of water in a year. And so I want you all to give yourselves a round of applause because that's amazing. You guys all stepped up. And I also wanted to share, I'm really, it's really special for me to be here, particularly in San Clemente. This is the city where my husband was born and raised, and he actually grew up down the street from Weyland on Inforster Ranch. And so Weyland has a very special place in our hearts. We can't afford an Original, so I got my husband a print for our fifth wedding anniversary. And so this is a very special challenge for us for many reasons, and we're really excited to have a pocket park as part of the prize. And so our staff at MODOC and your city staff will design a pocket park, which will help showcase how beautiful California native plants can be and how water-wise we can be. Because believe it or not, 60 to 80% of our residential water usage is outdoors. And so no matter what we do to save water indoors, if we're not saving water outdoors, we're really not making that big of a difference. And so this is a great way to showcase how beautiful it can be, and we can all enjoy it as a park. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you mind if we take a quick picture with the council? Well, we have a special plaque that somehow got lost in transit, so I'll be back again to give you guys the plaque.
If it's graceful, would it be so...
So, real quick, before you take off, I just wanted to say, this was a project that Mayor Steve Swartz really spearheaded, and so it's especially an honor to get this award in light of how hard he worked on it. So we'll, we'll accept the award in his honor. So thank you all, appreciate it.
Next is a presentation by Tom Palmasano of Southern California Edison concerning the August 3, 2018 incident at Song's. And I do have some speaker cards also.
Okay, thank you very much and good evening. Thanks for the...
You're welcome. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thanks for the opportunity. I have a short slide presentation, and what I've done is consolidated some information we presented in detail two weeks ago at our community engagement panel meeting. And for the slide to go forward, do I just click the mouse?
Just roll it down.
Just roll it down, okay. So real quickly, just a slide on San Onofre history. Most everybody knows we've had Units 1, 2, and 3 there. They are all retired. Unit 1 is partially removed, and we are preparing for the decommissioning of Units 2 and 3 and completing the offload activities. We have stored spent fuel on the site for more than 50 years, starting with the operation of Unit 1, and we will complete moving fuel to dry cask storage likely early next year. Our decommissioning principles, we talked quite a bit about at the community engagement panel meeting. Let me get on to give you a big picture of where we are in the decommissioning plan, then we'll talk more specifically about spent fuel. On the left side, we're in the period of pre-decommissioning work, part of which is preparing the plant for decommissioning. A large part of that is the SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act review, and I'll give you some specific target dates in a minute. And we are completing moving all the fuel, the remaining spent fuel, from wet to dry storage. Dry storage is clearly the safer and preferred mechanism to store fuel at a site once the reactors are out of service permanently. We then will have about a 10-year period of major decommissioning work, where what you see physically above ground for Units 2 and 3 will be removed. And at the end of that period, what will remain is the switchyard and the dry fuel storage facility. And that's a key point. It's a very important point for the communities. The fuel will remain on-site until the federal government acts to provide a location to remove spent fuel to, not just for Song's, but for all the nuclear plants around the country. When we have better clarity on when fuel is going to be removed from site, we'll enter into a NEPA review with the Navy. This is the National Environmental Policy Act. You all know we're on Camp Pendleton, which is federal land, so they will complete a NEPA review, and they will work with organizations like the California Coastal Commission and the State Lands Commission for a consistency review and determine the final end state for the site that meets the Navy's requirements and the appropriate environmental aspects of that. And then eventually, when the fuel is removed from the site, we'll complete the physical removal of all remaining structures, including will demolish, the term is ISFIC, Independent Spent Fuel Storage Installation, that's the dry cask facility. So with that picture, before I move on to spent fuel, we are not yet complete with the California Environmental Quality Act reviews. We do have a final environmental impact report that was certified by the State Lands Commission in March. The next step and the final step is a coastal development permit application, which will be, has been submitted to the Coastal Commission. We anticipate they will have a meeting in the fall of 2019 to consider and approve that coastal development permit. That's an important milestone, important date, and it's highlighted on our songscommunity.com website, so we want to make sure that's in front of everybody. Once that is done and we clear all the hurdles, we will then start the major dismantlement work. Now let me move on to used fuel. Many of you are familiar with this, these are the two dry fuel storage installations we currently have on-site. The AREVA system was put in place in 2003 and has 50... The AREVA system was put in place in 2003 and has 50 canisters loaded with spent fuel. The newer system is the Hultec system. There will eventually be 73 canisters with spent fuel. We currently have 29. We stopped after the August download incident and we're preparing now that we and the NRC are satisfied with all the corrective actions to resume that offload in the next several weeks. With that, a couple comments, and I'm really summarizing a lot of information we presented two weeks ago, so my last slide takes you to the Song's Community website. I certainly urge anybody who's interested to look at that information. First of all, we are responsible, Southern California Edison and the other three owners, for safely storing the fuel while it's on-site. Then it becomes a federal responsibility to remove it and store it off-site or dispose of it. With respect to the August 3 event, we have volumes of information we've provided at the CEP meeting. We have completed our corrective actions in the area of improved staffing, improved training, better procedures, better equipment for the workers, and much stronger oversight. That's what we and the contractor have done. The NRC likewise has identified their inspection plans, some, you know, most of which is not known to us, but they will have enhanced inspections as we prepare to resume activities. The most recent issue we had to resolve, to our satisfaction, the NRC had to do with the question of wear marks or scratches on the canisters. In all systems, the vertical or the horizontal, these canisters make contact as they're lowered 25 feet down into the storage vault, or in the horizontal situation, pushed on rails into the storage vault. So wear marks or scratches are not unexpected. The question came up, how significant are they? So we've done a lot of work, both analytical work, factory testing with identical materials, and we completed eight inspections of eight of the 29 downloaded canisters with an extremely sophisticated camera provided by GE that can actually examine and size the depth of a scratch. The bottom line is the scratchers are very minor. The deepest in one isolated area we found was about the thickness of a credit card. That's well below the limits, if you will, for a scratch on a canister. There is no threat to the integrity of the canister, nor does it provide a situation where it could cause corrosion. These are stainless steel canisters and there's a passive oxide layer that reforms even if it's disturbed with a scratch, reforms to protect the canister from ongoing corrosion. Now, with that said, we enter all this information in our databases. As we go forward with both these systems, we have inspection and maintenance plans, so these canisters will be periodically checked and monitored and inspected to confirm that nothing adverse is going on. The canisters are designed for 60 years, they have a service life expectation with proper maintenance of 100 years. And, you know, it's important, you'll see a slide in a minute, we need to really work with the federal government to really find a solution to remove fuel. Nobody is satisfied with fuel being stored here any longer than it has to be. A couple key points, spent fuel is more appropriate and safer in dry cask storage, okay? When you have no need for an operating spent fuel pool anymore in a retired nuclear plant. All the research tells us, the sooner you move it out of wet storage to dry storage, the safer it is to store. These are passive systems that need no electrical power, no water supplies, they just dissipate heat naturally. Secondly, it does package them for transportation. All the canisters we used are licensed today for transportation. And we've recently announced we're developing a strategic plan to assess the feasibility of relocating spent fuel off-site. What that really means is we, the utility, don't have the authority to move it off-site or to create an interim facility, but there are things that we need to identify, we as a utility and, you know, utilities in general and potentially other stakeholders can do to influence the federal government. So we're looking forward to that plan giving us some good insights and really raising the visibility of the issue. I was particularly asked to talk about radiation monitoring, this is an important topic. All the dry fuel storage facilities in the country, not only ours, but up at Diablo Canyon, Humboldt Bay, Sacramento Utility District, we all monitor these facilities for radiation. They're monitored periodically and we have permanent devices that measure radiation. Think of this as a film badge, if you've ever seen a radiological technician in a hospital, they wear that. It measures exposure. That's not real-time monitoring. Historically, these systems are well-shielded, nothing changes, we've got lots of good data, both here and elsewhere. However, there's been a clear recommendation from the public and the community engagement panel that we put in a real-time system. So we're going to do that. We use a real-time system now as we do our activities. We're designing the permanent system, which will go in service as we complete the offload and before we start the major dismantlement. We're also working with the counties to identify an appropriate way to make that information available to the public. That's typically not done across the country. One nuclear plant in Minnesota does that through a state agency. Here it appears the counties may be the more appropriate choice. So we'll have more information, but we're on schedule to have that system in place as we complete the offload. With that, I just want to touch on, you know, really the goal is eventually to move this fuel off-site. There are requirements for how long you have to wait for the fuel to cool down and decay from a radioactivity standpoint before you can ship the canisters. We will have 123 canisters of spent fuel to ship eventually. Most of them, you can see, we've got 35 of them that could be shipped now. Next year, with the Hultec canisters, 67 of those meet the requirements. So you can see we'll be, you know, well over 100, you know, by the end of next year. And then the remaining of the 23 canisters will mature out to 2030. There's technical reasons why those dates are picked and I've covered those at CEP meetings. But we want to keep this picture in front of people as we urge the federal government to take action. Our congressional and senatorial representatives need to get behind that and help. We want to be ready to ship fuel as soon as there's a reasonable alternative to ship it to. And I want to show you just, it's a much bigger picture than San Onofre. Certainly that's very close to our hearts and this is not an appropriate location in anybody's opinion for the long-term. We're aligned with that. But we have this problem nationwide, we have several sites in California, as well as you can see across the country. So there really is a need for concerted action to get the federal government to fulfill their responsibilities here. And we appreciate the voices that San Clemente has raised on that over the last several years. That's important. With that, I'll just close with, we have a robust website, songscity.com, where we have all the materials in detail we've printed to the CEP. We've got white papers, we've written on some of the more technical topics. Comments from the public are there, so we encourage anybody who's interested, that's a good resource. So thank you very much.
Any questions? Kathy?
Yes.
Hey, Tom, thank you for bringing the information about the real-time monitoring.
Yes.
I just want to make sure you are going to have that in-service as you're, before you complete the offload, but before you start dismantling.
No, it'll go in service when the offload's done. You know, yeah, we're designing it, we're procuring the equipment. When the last of the cani, and we have a system now that we use, it's just all internal. We do that for monitoring for our own purposes. When the last canister's in place and everything's stable, we'll put the permanent system in place, along with the feed to the appropriate offsite agency.
So you think that that might be through county channels?
That would appear, again, we're in early discussions with what the appropriate channel is. When we look at emergency planning, you know, it's different now in decommissioning. The counties really, under the all-hazards plan, really respond to any events at Song's and have the legal authority to advise the public on measures to take. So we think that's probably the most appropriate agency.
So just, so that, you know, we can say this, so that the public can hear it, is that it's very important for our residents, we live the closest to the base, or I'm sorry to the, well, it is the base, but we live the closest to the, this storage, that we have monitoring that they can independently look at and decide for themselves what, that it is safe. Because we, as a council, we've been telling people and sticking up for Edison that it is safe, but we really need that monitoring to know. I think we're at that point. We have the technology that it should be done.
Yeah. We hear that loud and clear. The monitoring going to effect, as we work out the final details with the county, we'll be glad to discuss exactly how the reporting's going to go.
Okay. So I attended the CEP this last time and appreciated everything that Hultec said and the person that has taken over to review this. It sounded like that there will be enhanced supervision of what's happening. And I think there was some request that that actually be the NRC, actually be there. So the rest of the canisters, what is the time of how long you think that will take?
So, you know, the NRC had made that, their public announcement prior to the CEP meeting, they are satisfied. They're satisfied, we've completed everything and it's safe to restart the reload. We've concluded that it's safe to restart the reload, we're not ready yet, we're mobilizing the workers, we're training, going through the final training activities with them. We're probably several weeks away and we will make a public announcement, a notification to the CEP when we do restart, okay? As far as enhanced supervision, Hultec, the contractor, will have enhanced supervision. We will have enhanced oversight people and the NRC is stepping up their inspection activities, most of which are unannounced. So they will be out there on a regular basis, periodic basis, observing canister loading.
Is there any estimate of how much time with the new criteria that you've gotten for these procedures, how long it's going to take?
To complete the remaining 44 canisters, probably to the first quarter, end of first quarter next year, I would say. And we will keep you updated at the CEP as we restart and hit the production pace, if you will. There's no rush on this and we certainly will be very deliberate and take whatever time necessary. But that's just a tentative timeframe.
Okay, and one last question. There was a lot of talk about statistical data. Is that how you figured out how many canisters to look at or was there definite incidents that you knew which canisters had to be inspected?
So out of the 29 canisters that have been downloaded, we did eight. And there was a statistical number that gives us a, you know, 95% confidence level, if you will. But we selected particular canisters. The one involved in August 3 that hung up did not drop, but had difficulty downloading. Another one in July that had a couple repeated attempts, because, you know, the thinking is if anything is received maybe more scratches than another, those would be representative. And then five somewhat at random, to give us an adequate statistical base.
And I know that you said the NRC is satisfied, but do you think the public's going to be satisfied that not every single one was, the camera went through every one?
There are certainly some people who won't be satisfied and we respect that. The, you know, it's our job to ensure it's safe. Like I said, this is not the end of inspecting canisters, it's really the start of it. For the AREVA systems, coming up on its 20-year license renewal, there will be mandatory inspections that start. For the new Hultec system, by NRC rules, we don't have to inspect anything for a number of years, we've decided to do that early. That's why we developed the technology. So these canisters will be monitored regularly with enough of a basis to understand if something is changing.
Okay. I appreciate that you moving that up, but that means that every canister will be inspected sooner than, than when it was originally licensed.
Again, it's a sampling plan going forward. So when you have 123 canisters, you have sampling requirements. So as we get these programs approved by the NRC and submitted to the Coastal Commission, we'll explain the basis. For example, you take certain canisters that you look at every time and then you randomly pick other canisters to make sure that, you know, you're really, the issue is you're not looking for scratches, quite frankly, you're looking for long-term deposits on the canisters, potential corrosion. There's an elaborate evaluation called an aging management analysis that's done to say, what is the mechanism you have to worry about for the long-term? This is done across the country. For our AREVA system, we're completing that now with the NRC and the vendor AREVA. And they've got a wealth of information on sister systems on the East Coast and at Sacramento use the same system. So it, this warrants more than just a short answer, I realize, so. But the canisters will be monitored on a basis that gives us confidence on how they're performing.
Any other questions?
I have some questions on behalf of a resident who couldn't be here tonight. Tom, the resident was asking, how can she trust as these decisions are morally responsible and not financially driven? Could you address that?
Sure. And it's a good question and it's a fair question, you know, we, our principles of, you know, safety, stewardship, and engagement, we work hard to live by. We did not disclose this event in August in a timely manner and we failed on that. And we've admitted that. I realize there will always be a skepticism of a utility, you know, Edison in this case. I think if the resident's going to attend CEP meetings where we do our best to give honest answers, we do our best to give the information behind those answers and answer questions between meetings. Likewise, you know, the residents have to also rely on the NRC, who's an independent regulatory agency who, you know, inspects, reports results, and has been willing to come out, they've been at the last three CEP meetings to discuss directly.
That's great, thank you. Why do we chance less-than-quality storage containers for nuclear waste? We must have more adequate storage containment than is currently being used.
Yeah, and we don't agree with that statement. That statement circulated since 2014, particularly talking about a thick-walled cask versus a thin-walled stainless steel canister. About 90% of the canisters in this country are the ones we use, the thin-walled stainless steel and a concrete overpack. I actually have experience from a plant in Minnesota where I used a thick-walled steel cask in that case. Our canisters meet all safety requirements, have an expected lifetime in which we would expect the federal government to remove them from the site. They can be monitored, we've just demonstrated they can be inspected. So as we look at it, there's very few thick-walled casks in use in this country. There's a German vendor who's, we're going to get in contact with, we talked to them in 2014 and they elected not to enter the US market. So again, we've talked about this quite a bit over the last five years at the CEP meeting and I'd be glad to have a much more detailed discussion, this isn't a 30-second answer.
Okay, thank you. And I think there's one more that I didn't catch in your presentation. There were several, but I'm just asking the ones that you didn't cover. And this one, perhaps you can give us some input or some expertise and guidance on this. How can this not be the most pressing issue for our community and all surrounding communities as well?
It's an important issue for the communities, there is no doubt, okay? Spent fuel has been stored safely in dry cask storage since the late 80s in this country. The country has a lot of experience with this, not just the utilities, but Department of Energy and the NRC. It is important that this fuel eventually be removed from the site and relocated somewhere else to a storage facility or a deep repository. The actual risk, and risk arguments are always difficult to have on something like this, the actual risk of dry fuel storage is significantly less than the risk of an operating reactor. And these systems, again, from the timeframe with appropriate maintenance, are going to be able to perform their function. And, you know, in 2015, the NRC and FEMA approved a reduction in the emergency plan because with all fuel in dry storage, and even what's left in wet storage has decayed so far, there's really not a credible event that could cause a release that could have an adverse effect on the public. Now, that said, it's an important issue. That's why I covered the slide on the nationwide picture and the transportation. It's really going to take concerted action, it's going to take local residents and city councils and counties and states putting pressure on the federal government.
Okay, so we could do more in that area.
The voices are important.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much.
Great, and Tom, I just wanted to thank you for coming. We were going to have you on a while ago, but Mayor Swartz's death unfortunately delayed this. The only question I had is you've referenced several times about getting the federal government to get this stuff out of here, which is I think what we all want.
Right.
Congressman Levin recently proposed the Spent Fuel Prioritization Act.
Right.
Has SC taken a position on that?
Well, first of all, we appreciate what Congressman Levin and the other representatives who have spoken up recently, Ruda and Peters, are doing. So we appreciate that. The, you know, our feeling is what the federal government needs to do, let me just give the background. Today, under the Nuclear Waste Policy Act, there's a concept of a queue, which would take fuel from across the country, the oldest first. So you'd take some fuel out of Song's, you'd take some fuel out of Humboldt Bay, take some fuel out of Main Yankee. That doesn't make any sense. We think the smart thing to do is start with decommissioned facilities like Song's, like Rancho Seco and Humboldt Bay that no longer are operating and get their fuel out first. Likewise, the congressman talked about population density, environmental risks like seismic. We think that makes sense, but that really takes a change to the Nuclear Waste Policy Act where the congressional action is important.
Thank you again for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the time, appreciate it.[1737.01][1737.01](APPLAUSE).
We have two comment cards, Mr. Hedrick and Jordan Barton. Gary, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. I'm Gary Hedrick with San Clemente Green. We have a readership of about 5,000 people, concerned citizens that really understand this problem perhaps more than most of our local community. And we feel an obligation to share the information that we've gained ever since the shutdown, basically, in 2012. Just a brief review, I was contacted in 2010 by someone that worked at the plant, told me about the problems which actually led to the steam me about the problems which actually led to the steam generator failing, which we ignored and eventually led to the permanent shutdown. So tonight, I'm here to talk about some of the other misinformation that we're having to deal with. For one thing, I think it's important that everyone realizes the canisters, each canister holds as much nuclear waste as was released in the Chernobyl accident. And we'll have one hundred and twenty-three of those stored here in thin canisters. So our position, like Mr. Paul Masano was saying, has been we should use the best canisters available, not ones that were for temporary use under the assumption that the federal government would be picking them up soon. Other countries in the world have these, these thick bolted canisters that can be unbolted, repaired, inspected, and they have no need for an exterior canister for transportation. So some of the cost of this thin canister, it's only five-eighths of an inch thick versus ten to twenty inches thick, the cost involved in double packaging these things to transport is one consideration. Another consideration is, like Tom said, some of these canisters have been around for fifty years already. And we know that they're going to be here for a lot longer because of the cooling periods and the math just doesn't add up. If you pretend for a moment that you're on the receiving end in New Mexico or Texas and you know that you're getting canisters that can't be inspected, repaired or replaced and they want to store them in your neck of the woods for another, you know, fifty, a hundred years before we have a permanent site, that's going to be rejected from the start. So we all want this problem to be solved as best as possible. The fact that other countries prefer the thick casks are something we should consider. Our position, even though we want this to be removed as soon and as safely as possible, is that these canisters should be replaced with the thick casks, which requires a, I'm sorry.
Real quick, ten seconds?
Thanks.
Thanks.
The thick casks will allow us to move this waste sooner because it's more reliable. And we need to put it in the thick casks because the same process you use to replace the casks is the same thing you would have to do with the canister if there was a problem or a leak.
Mr. Hedrick, can I get you to wrap it up? I'm sorry. We've got to move on, we've got to be—
I know, it's really important issue, I'm sorry.
No worries. Appreciate it.
Oh, I forgot to mention, Tom is unreliable as much as I like the guy. He lied to us about the problem with the canister.
Gary, Mr. Barton, appreciate it. You got oral communications as well, if you'd like to speak.
Again, my name's Jordan Barton. I just happen to have a degree in chemistry from Colorado School of Mines, a bachelor's amongst my degrees, and be homeless. But when I was at University of Arizona doing my master's, Lars Fornhold brought up this great point when Fukushima happened and that these companies need to get on this boron nitride and use that to neutralize the waste in case there was a problem. I just spoke with the gentleman running Edison who's in charge of this project. He had said he's had a general familiarity with boron nitride. I got it right here. This company in the UK, UK Abrasive, sells boron carbide and boron carbide powders for nuclear applications to ensure an extra coating on top of the layer. I've met some employees at this Edison plant and as an engineer, I'm shocked. I am not shocked they made mistakes. That nuclear plant represents a huge, huge issue because it's not if, it's when we're going to have a major quake. Then what's going to happen to those canisters? I didn't hear anything about engineering modeling of earthquakes around those canisters. Seems like a pretty big deal. We don't want to learn the lesson of Fukushima again. That's a bad lesson to learn, a real bad one. So I think we're really underappreciating the seriousness of this issue and the overall incompetence from Edison. You can't assume because it's a big company, they have all these great scientists at the top. I've learned that often they cut corners and it's not the greatest scientist that makes it to the top. So I just wanted to kind of open your eyes there a little bit about this boron nitride issue and then the seriousness of the issue. Thanks.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of thirty minutes is allocated for oral communications, part one, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation.
Our first speaker is Brad and then Douglas Schaaf and then Jeff Perkin.
Counsel, I'm here and I'm disappointed, but I'm not surprised. I've emailed all of you and I've only gotten responses from two of you. I'm talking about the lack of sheriff deputies in this town and the substantial increase in crime, which hasn't been reported out by this city. The city must prioritize our safety. Laura and Dan have attempted to do this, but the council has voted against any increases other than the two additional sheriffs that were approved, I believe at the last council meeting. So I come forward with some suggestions. First, funding is possible for additional sheriffs and it could be done right now. It means leasing out the unused space in our new city hall. It means doing something with this city hall to raise revenue. It means eliminating excess staff positions. And that, and we know we have additional code enforcement we don't need. We know we have an analyst we just hired for no reason whatsoever. And we know we have an assistant to the assistant city manager that's absolutely unnecessary in a time where sheriffs are more important. In other words, prioritize our staff. We know that any government entity, I don't think anybody really believes we have no staff that can be cut, yet we've been told by the council that there are no positions on our staff that can be cut. Well, the city's hemorrhaging from crime and homelessness and yet staff is more important than sheriff. What I'm asking for this council to do is to direct the city manager to come back in this next meeting, which for all of you is August, we're off for July and the first meeting in August, and come back with at least two percent cuts across the board to fund at least a million and a half dollars of additional sheriff. I believe significantly more can be found. And we pay a lot of money to our city manager and staff to find these cuts and to do what is necessary to provide us safety. So I'm actually asking the council to do when I'm done speaking is direct individually, each of you, ask the city manager to go back, sharpen his pencil and find two to five percent cuts across the board in the departments so that we can use that money now, not a year from now, as Dan has said he's going to do, and I appreciate that, Dan, but it's too little, too late. We need it done now. We need August meeting. We need to have the money, we need the council to decide, and we need everybody here to fund, the council, to fund additional sheriffs in August. So, when I'm done speaking, I'm asking each of you to ask the city manager to come back with a minimum of a million and a half dollars of cuts and direct him to bring those to you. Now you can then judge whether those cuts are reasonable or necessary, but I know that government is a waste, that most of the positions or a lot of positions can be cut. And certainly asking for five percent cuts across the board is not out of line. And I hope everybody in this city that's here today supports me in this.
Schaaf and then Jeff Perkin, followed by Susan Schisler.
Thank you, members of the city council. I'm a resident of Sea Summit. First, I want to thank the members of the council for putting a hard end date on the ordinance authorizing the PICO encampment. It does demonstrate a good faith effort to search for a more appropriate solution to this very complicated problem. However, the Sea Summit community continues to experience safety and security issues due to the location of the camp only a hundred and fifty feet from homes in our community. Residents of the camp have continued to come into our community, in some cases harassing residents and users that are our beautiful trail system, and in one case actually putting a large tent in the middle of one of the very popular sections of the trail. It is well-known that a large percentage of the homeless population has an addiction problem. Statistics have shown that an increase in property crimes is a predictable consequence of concentrations of homeless individuals. You've heard from other residents of the community that they have observed residents of the encampment testing locked doors on homes and gates and entering unlocked vehicles in the neighborhood. We've countered the encampment's impact by paying eighteen thousand dollars a month for a twenty-four-seven private security service. You've indicated that patrols by the sheriff have increased in the area and that is very much appreciated, but given how we all know our police services are stretched to the limit, this alone is probably not an acceptable solution. We will continue to have a dialogue with the city concerning security, but we hope that the city will find a way to assist us with this additional financial burden that's been foisted upon us. Finally, I want to encourage the city council to continue to explore other options for relocating the temporary encampment away from any residential neighborhood, not just Sea Summit, any, until a more permanent regional homeless shelter is established. As a community, we hope that an acceptable site to relocate the camp can be agreed upon well before the one-year deadline described in the revised ordinance. One of the other things that I'd like the council to consider in, with respect to the rules, is I know that many of the homeless shelters have a rule that you have to check in at ten o'clock in the evening and then the doors are closed till six in the morning. It seems to me that we have the ability to do that here and it would give us a great deal of comfort that these people aren't roaming around at two in the morning. Thank you.
Next is Mr. Perkin, followed by Susan Schisler and then Gene James.
Hello, city council. My name is Jeff Perkin and I'm a resident of San Clemente. I hope your research into wireless radiation has been sufficiently alarming and informative about the very serious potential impact of 5G on public health and freedom. I'm sure you are beginning to see why Dr. Martin Paul, professor emeritus of Washington State University, calls the 5G rollout, quote, "absolutely insane" and, quote, "the stupidest idea in the history of the world." As mainstream media works desperately to shove this race with China to 5G narrative down our throats, we need to honestly ask what this is a race towards and do we really want to win it? Is it a race to see who can make their population most sick in the effort to build a technologically totalitarian dystopia? Are we willing to give up the right to decide whether or not we will have radiation technology impacting our lives twenty-four hours a day? The millimeter wavelength of 5G is what is used in airport body scanners. Do we want to turn San Clemente into a large airport body scanner? Do we want to turn, or how will that affect our way of life, our quality of life, the physical and mental health of our loved ones and even our pets? How will it impact our environment, tourism and even property values? In recent months, at least twenty-one U.S. cities, including cities in California, have passed ordinances restricting close proximity small cell installation and many are charging recertification fees to make it less profitable for the wireless industry. Take a look at the policies of Monterey, California, which has one of the most robust local ordinances for small cell facilities in order to protect local interests in accordance with state and federal law. California cities have more power than in most states since on April fourth of this year, the California Supreme Court published an opinion supporting municipal authority to make regulations on so-called small cell public right-of-way towers and uses of the public's right-of-way. This opinion affirms the two thousand appellate court, or two thousand and sixteen appellate court ruling affirming the exercise of municipalities' full police powers to regulate small cell towers in the public's right-of-way, including that municipalities do have discretionary power. A wireless subcommittee should be formed similar to Monterey and Fairfax that includes experts, lawyers and residents without conflicts of interest in order to monitor the development, implementation and revision of rules and guidelines governing wireless facilities. This committee could also work to promote fiber optic infrastructure as opposed to a 5G network. If all else fails, notices of liability should be filed with wireless companies and manufacturers of this technology, making them responsible for its effects on our residents. If they cannot prove it is harmless, then they should be subject to citations and fees, hitting them the only place it seems to hurt their bank accounts. It is deeply disturbing that our government is putting us all in this dangerous position and I'm sure the public will support you in proceeding with strength, wisdom and courage. Please do all that you can to protect the health of residents, especially young and unborn children who are most vulnerable to wireless radiation.
Thank you, Mr. Perkin. Susan Schisler, followed by Gene James and then Marcy Skinner.
Hi, I live in Sea Summit. Last Saturday, I was going for a walk. I was talking at the top of the trail that's across from the campsite. I started to continue on my walk, sorry, I started to continue on my walk and I looked down and there's, the campers were hollering, making gestures at me. The Sea Summit guard said, "Be careful, a camper's coming across the street." So the camper came up and started giving the Sea Summit guard a hard time. I laughed. And on my way, when I came back later on, the Sea Summit guard told me that the same man was down in the campsite. The police had to be called because he was, I'm not sure what he was doing, but it was the same man that was coming up the trail. I walk with my grandchildren all the time, it's very scary. The campers hang out in groups on the sidewalk, they're obviously high. They sit on the side of the fence doing something. I don't know what they're doing, but I'm sure it's not what they're supposed to be. They need better supervision. I've seen people dropped off at the homeless, at the U-Haul and go over to the site. I've seen people dropped off in PICO Park, because I walk all the time, PICO Park, and then they trot over to the homeless site. They're not San Clemente people, I don't think. I walk with my two small grandchildren daily. I never stopped walking with all the tents in North Beach, but these campers are different. I'm very concerned. We need to move quickly to make a permanent shelter because it's very scary. Thank you.
Next is Gene James, followed by Marcy Skinner and then Daryl McFann.
I come to here this evening with a concern. When the Friendship Shelter first, when it was first announced they were going to displace, I don't know what it is, twenty-five or thirty people living in seventeen units, I decided to look into who the Friendship Shelter was. And one of my concerns is we're looking at using the Friendship Shelter without even doing an RFP. This note that Mr. Maxinoff sent to a taxpayer here in San Clemente basically says that they're not going to do a RFP for shelter operations. So I looked a little bit further into Friendship Shelter. I'm not going to use the name because I really don't feel like getting in litigation with someone, but I will email the name to Mr. Maxinoff. And there's an individual who holds an executive position with Friendship Shelter that was once a middle school teacher and a coach for a water polo team. For a period of three years, this gentleman started a sexual, in his thirties, started a sexual relationship with a fourteen-year-old little girl. Probably by medical definitions, psychiatry definitions, that's probably not a pedophile, but it's certainly a no-good SOB. And how, and Friendship Shelter is fully aware of this gentleman, has him in a position of trust. He's already abused his authority with one set of vulnerable young people and now we're going to put him in a position where he can abuse his authority again with other vulnerable people? I'm not, I have never been an advocate of our homeless, of our vagrants here in town. But damn it, if we're going to do a shelter, we need to do it right. I submit to you, using Friendship Shelter, an organization that has a individual who's senior, whose position is senior in Friendship Shelter and has lost his ability to teach, has abused his authority and has had sex with a fourteen-year-old girl, I think we need to do an RFP. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. James. Marcy Skinner, followed by Daryl McFann and then Jenny Yoon.
Thank you again. My name is Marcy and I also live in Sea Summit. I want to thank the council for agreeing to the sunset clause of one year and considering the reimbursement of our increased security since this campsite has begun about three weeks ago. Just today, I was walking on the trail and noticed that every bench on the trail, and I did that three-mile loop, had homeless people on it. These were not people that were walkers or with their grandkids. These were people hanging out on the benches. I understand it's public and I understand they have that right. They weren't doing anything illegal, but what if they were? There was no one there to do anything about it. What I wanted to do today is I just wanted to make sure— What I wanted to do today is I just wanted to make sure that you will cover the increased costs of our security at Sea Summit. We've had security 24/7, and it's the only way we feel safe. He has talked to many homeless people that have come in to our development. He asks every time a car is there that shouldn't be there, or a person that shouldn't be there, and we just need to make sure this continues. We also need council to move this encampment before the one-year clause. I know you're working on it. We just want to make sure that this happens, and happens quickly. We need to make sure also, and we want everybody to know, that we believe that this encampment needs to be away from any residents. We understand that no community wants it, but we need to make sure that this encampment, understanding it's not a facility, allows people to loiter and hang around. So we need to make sure that this is outside of any residence, parks, and schools, even if it means we need to get buses or transportation for them to have access to services. And we need to have this happen before the one year. Thank you.[669.65][669.65](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Marcy. Darryl McFann, followed by Jenny Yoon, and then Jim Beaver.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Dan Bane and the council. Thank you for your open house over at the community center. That was wonderful, and it was informative. I would have liked to have seen all the council members there just because you guys represent so well the homeless and this whole issue. There was a lot of backslapping going on there. And, you know, some of you may know about this girl that Kirsty just spoke about, that I belong to a large group of people, and I hope I represent well, that are very, very concerned and also have love. We're called haters. I'm the guy who saved the guy who was nearly beaten to death at North Beach. I'm the guy who was there in the encampment when a girl came running up screaming and crying, "Please help me, please, please, I'm so afraid". What we've discovered in the last week is we don't have the resources that you guys think we have. We don't have it, and it's disturbing. We still have her in our custody because none of the resources have her in custody for safety. We're paying for -- now, to tell FAM, "Thank you", we got four days' hotel voucher from FAM. So I want to make that publicly clear, that they were able to do that. But all of our references, all of our resources, not one would accept her in. This is disturbing. This is a girl who's not a meth addict. This is a girl who's not -- she's homeless in an encampment where her husband, by the way, mentioned that he got hooked driving down to North Beach and buying his crystal methadone from the tents. And they were living in Rancho Santa Margarita. And now they're homeless in our encampment there. And she's not because she's in custody safety. But we've been spending our own money for food, clothing, driving, hotels, this kind of thing. We want desperately to hook our wagon up to a really healthy horse. We don't have that. A lot of these references that were given to us through Mercy House, FAM, through Human Options, all of these are numbers that go straight to voicemail, and we still have not heard back from a lot of them. This is ridiculous. To take her up there and then find the net where we can put her in in Anaheim, and they go, "I'm sorry, we're only accepting Anaheim residents". They don't tell you that on the reference when they're telling you, "Call these numbers". We're right up to here with trying to figure out what to do. Tomorrow, we're hoping and praying she will wind up in Salvation Army. Today, she was supposed to finally be admitted in, and the admittance lady had an emergency. She wasn't there, and so back to the streets with her. I'm just trying to say that all of this is to, please, help us with resources so we can do better.
Thank you, Darryl.
Appreciate it.
Jenny Yoon, followed by Jim Beaver, and then George Gregory.
Hi, my name is Jenny Yoon, and I'm a resident of San Clemente in Sea Summit. Since you voted to put the homeless tent city directly across the street from Pico Park, my five-year-old daughter and I have stopped going there, and we have stopped using the trails. We don't feel safe when on most weekend mornings we find a tent pitched behind the public bathroom or the transients lingering at the picnic table and engaging in drug-fueled rants full of obscenities. When we call to report the incidences, we are told that this is just what these people do. Perhaps men may feel differently, but as a woman and a mother, I feel threatened when I am on the receiving end of these obscenities. I just want you to understand the impact your actions have had on our community. While I no longer use the park, I do still worry about the other children who play there, sometimes unattended. So to that end, I am asking, what are you doing to protect the children at Pico Park by putting the homeless tent encampment across the street? Are you doing background checks on the campers to make sure no registered sex offenders are living there? Are you putting in cameras at Pico Park to deter predatory behavior from drug-fueled transients towards the children? Are you cleaning the sand at the park for syringes and other dangerous items? You know, children see the sand and immediately take off their shoes. I worry for the child whose parents don't know there's a homeless encampment so close by. It only takes one bad incident to destroy a child's life. Please don't wait for that incident. Move the camp to another location away from the parks, schools, and residences as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Next is Jim Beaver, followed by George Gregory, and then Kim Nicholson.
Thank you. I've got a PowerPoint presentation. San Clemente leads the way in spending on litigation. I think in the last three years, we spent $5 million lawsuits, losing them in an unprecedented way for a city of our size. This check here is made out from our city's attorney to residents for reform. It's for $4,240-something, and it's to pay for the reprinting of petitions because it was his job representing the city to go over and make sure everything was clear and correct, and he screwed up. And without even asking, he offered. He goes, "Nope, my bad. Let me take care of this because it shouldn't be on the onus of taxpayers". So next slide, please. So there is our city attorney, who's on the front page of the Journal, speaking about the First Amendment, and he's got a very nice article talking about how important that is. Next slide, please. We can see the lawsuit that the city is currently facing from several months ago when our city attorney directed our mayor on how to deal with a local gadfly or watchdog, depending on how you look at him, because he was sick of hearing him at the second part of the session. Next slide, please. There goes the yellow pad. There we go. So the city attorney advised him what to do on that yellow pad. And so if anybody here watching at home can go back and look at the clip of it, it was pretty shocking. So the mayor read rules that were no longer in effect. Then he directed everybody in the chamber to leave. He then directed the sheriff to be posted at the door, and that everybody had to pledge that they would respect these new rules and outdated rules that were ruled unconstitutional. It was so bad, if you crank up the volume on it, you could actually hear Chris Hamm, who's not the brightest guy. You could hear him say, "Jesus, Steve", because it was so bad. This was entirely directed by our city attorney. The lawsuit is for violation of the First Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment, violation of the Brown Act. This entire fiasco was solely your work product. And how do we know that? Because when Brad Malamute asked for that yellow pad that he was reading from, which was your instructions, you said it was client privilege. You said it was your work product, and we didn't have to turn it over. This lawsuit is going to cost taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars. A couple of years ago, you stood up and you did the right thing and said, "My bad". Do the citizens have to pay for this lawsuit? Or are you going to step up? And I'm asking you because you've interrupted me several times over the years while I speak, and I'm going to yield the floor to you now. Is there anything that prevents you morally or legally from stepping up and covering the cost of this lawsuit so the taxpayers don't? Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith? Tens of thousands of dollars.
This is a public comment period, so I'm not going to comment.
Well, maybe somebody else can ask you.
Mayor Protem Bane, may I ask? I wasn't aware, city attorney, that we did pay before. We reimbursed a group for a mistake. I wasn't aware of that, the check, the $4,300. Was that your decision?
Yeah, I can comment on that. It's, I think, in my mind, in the realm of no good deed goes unpunished. To save the circulators the time and effort of reprinting a ballot argument that might -- or initiative impartial -- honestly, I can't remember. But to save them the time and effort, we offered to pay for them to reprint their ballots when we caught the error in the impartial analysis. And that's how I'm paid back for that gesture of goodwill is with a little presentation like that.
Would it be appropriate to do in the new case? The new case that Mr. Beaver --
I'm not going to comment on the lawsuit except to say that I think it's completely specious.
Specious, okay, thank you.
Mr. Gregory.
Hello, council. George Gregory, North Beach, criminal. The way we fix things in San Clemente is rub money on it. "Oh, I'm scared. I need a private security guard. Rub some money on it. My knee hurts, rub some money on it. Oh, I want some more cops. Rub some money on it. Not My Friendship Shelter will be opening on my street. I think I want a security guard because I'm scared, and I'm a cupcake. So will you reimburse for the security guard?". Anyways, enough sarcasm. The Not My Friendship Shelter will be moving into the Los Bolos Ball Club house, claiming their 17 units. He'll be collecting 17 HUD checks for a nine-unit building. Is he charging per bedroom? Evidently, he's a pedophile of some kind. Criminals, yes. What if I need a medical procedure? I think I need to leverage my property. Guess what? The values of my property isn't there. I get to die because I can't rub money on it. So, ladies and gentlemen, how are we going to fix this? Now, over to the camp. Obviously, you need rules. Shelters close, shelters fill up. Our problem with the regional shelter is going to be the density, the amount of people you're going to try to house in there. Nobody's going to like it. It's an aggregate problem. It needs to be aggregate through the community. Not 17 in one space, not a giant encampment, not something like that, but a few here and there. People need to learn to help these poor people that need some help. And the others need to be put in a sanctuary, I guess we used to call them, or sanitariums because they're mental, and they obviously can't help themselves. The thing is, is we can't get these people out of their predicament because nobody can afford to hire them at $15 an hour, minimum wage, thank you Governor Brown. And if there was some kind of tax credit or something like that, maybe some people would take a risk on these fellows. Okay? Now, the enablers aren't helping a bit, and the complainers aren't helping a bit. We need solutions. We need to close the camp now and then. In other words, not just next year, but it needs to close once a week for cleaning. And that way, their personal camps don't get so big that they can't carry them off. Otherwise, we're going to have to hire moving vans. We'll have to rub some more money on it. So the thing is, we need to close the camp once a week or daily, whatever it takes, to get everybody on the page that this is a temporary solution. You're not entitled to live here. You're entitled to follow the rules and stay here to rest. So the thing is, is these camps now are getting so big, and you see how big they're getting. It's getting to the size that there's no way they can carry it off. Okay? And the thing is, if they can't carry it off, well, it's not a temporary situation, is it? What's going to happen next? Are they going to start pouring foundations? Building patios? Hiring their own security guards because they're afraid of the people at Sea Summit? I'm not really sure. All I know is I've got the biggest insult in the world. I'd like the grand jury to look into Not My Friendship Shelter.
Thank you.
Grand jury, thank you.
Kim Nicholson, followed by David Bloom. So this is going to be our last comment until second comment.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I'm a new resident here of San Clemente. I moved in September of last year. We moved away from a homeless crisis in a drug-addiction location close to Mason Newport, and I can speak to the fact that it can become a nightmare. We had our house broken in, our cars broken into, theft. So anyways, we moved down here for a nice, quieter neighborhood, safe, and we have this new homeless shelter, which I understand it is not against -- you know, we're not against the homeless. I know it needs to have a solution. I don't think the solution is, though, putting it next to a school, next to a park, next to a neighborhood where you're just asking for a toxic, tragic incident to occur, mixing the two. And I think it's irresponsible of the city. I have a question as to why they put it there. It seems like when there was other areas zoned, that that wasn't the best location. Even the city didn't rank it as the best location. And as a resident of Sea Summit, I can speak to, like, I used to walk the trails, and you see just people loitering, drug transactions. The public restrooms are a mess. I mean, that's like a swinging door of people coming in and out, and I don't feel safe. And it's only been a couple -- a month, I think. And you've really seen the activity ground. That camp can house 96 people, and I don't think the city has the resources. What I have had to call for help, it's taken hours for anyone to come. By that point, you know, it's kind of you either have to leave, or it's been -- anyways, I just feel like it's not a safe place. I feel like there's a better solution. I'm glad the city is working on that, but I would like to see the restrooms locked, make sure that maybe checking the background of some of the people at the camp. I mean, it's kind of frightening, some of the stuff you see. And those trails are pretty hidden. You can't see when you're walking around the corner or, you know. It's very -- I don't feel safe. And I think it's a disaster for women and children, especially walking around there. And I think it's a disaster for women and children especially, walking around there. So, that's it. Thank you.
So, our first 30-minute oral comment period is over, so we'll catch any comments that didn't get addressed now in the second period.
Can we have a motion to waive reading and full of all resolutions and ordinances?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Ward, second by Councilmember Hamm, all in favor? Aye.
Close session, report, city attorney.
Oh, wait, just one second, so you skipped over three. So, I wanted to have for future discussion, actually, you know what? This is for immediate action. Everyone, I'm not going to do it for immediate action, I'll do it later, okay?
City attorney?
Yeah, we had a closed session report dating back to March 19th, 2019. On that closed session, there was a discussion of a workers' compensation claim that the city was able to settle with its carrier and the workers' compensation board, and so that settlement is final as of that date. And then, there was no reportable action taken tonight. However, the council did approve settlement of one of the lawsuits listed. The settlement needs to be approved and finalized by the other side, but as soon as that happens, we'll make an announcement available to anyone requesting it so that they can know of the resolution of that lawsuit. It will also be announced at the council's next meeting, but since that's a while off, if anybody wants to receive notice, they should let me or Joanne know and we'll get it to them.
Which case? Are we entitled to know which case?
Trent, next.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion in action. The public has requested the removal of item R.
I also was going to request R.
Any others? Do we have a motion or?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Councilmember Hamm made the motion, second by Councilmember Ward, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Mr. Culbertson, actually, do we have a? No, Mr. Culbertson?
Now, on a lighter note, Larry Culbertson with the Historical Society. I came here tonight to introduce our nominee for the city patriarch, Mr. Rick Dival. We based our selection on the fact that Rick is the eldest member of the Dival family with roots going back to the founding of San Clemente in the late 1920s. Rick's grandfather, Roy Dival, had the first mortuary in San Clemente. He was an active member of the community. Roy's children, Roy Junior and Don, both had businesses here in town, and they also were very active in local organizations. Roy Junior's son, Rick, continued in his father's footsteps by being an active member of the community in many civic organizations, including the Exchange Club, Golf Club, Chamber of Commerce, San Clemente Golf Commission, Casa Romanica, the Historical Society, just to name a few. Rick's uncle, Rick's Uncle Don was the city patriarch from 1989 to 2006. His Aunt Lois, here tonight, is our city matriarch. The Dival family is about the last of the pioneer families that helped Ole Hansen build San Clemente in the 1920s and 30s. They were also one of the driving forces for the preservation in the 1970s when we were losing so many of our old buildings to development. With that, I'd like to present Rick Dival.
Thank you, Larry.
I'm not sure what the proper order is if you have to officially vote on this, but we do have, we have this made up, so, to present, so if you could present it to him.
Or does it need to be? First, and then we can present it, so we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, second, all second it. Motion by Councilmember Ferguson, second by me, all in favor?
Aye, aye. Let's make a comment. So, I think the council should comment quickly that you've been here so long, so we'll do this quickly, that I can't think of a better person to be our patriarch because you do so much for the community. You're at, like, every ribbon cutting, every single thing that I go to for the chamber. You're there and so positive representation for San Clemente. I just think this is a no-brainer.
Thank you.
So, I thank you for his nomination and obviously, we've accepted it, so.
We do have a small number of the Dival family here tonight. Would it be possible to get a picture with the council and the family?
Sure.
Well, come on in.
We're going to have our matriarch stand up.
Matriarch and matriarch.
So, Rick, real quick, so you can have this for the picture, we've got, looks like a nice little name tag for you. Uh-oh.
I'm kidding.
So, now, everybody will know who you are as if they didn't already, but thank you very much, it's an honor to have you here and.
It's the cutest little girl.
Oh, thank you. I agree. So, you want to get a picture down here? Where do you want us? Where do you want to be?
Or how about?
I don't care.
Right here. Right here.
Is this good?
Yeah, we'll move this.
Yes, did you raise her?
No.
I've nobody. I got in front of the levels.
Yeah. Are you in there?
Yep.
Just watch that step.
Yes, yes, work it, yes. Work with me, people. I want those photoshopped.
We're going to need you here for crowd control at times, too, so, clear your schedule.
Hey, should we say something?
Yeah, say something.
Say what?
I've just been around a long time, I hope, I'm honored to be the patriarch and I, Larry left out my grandmother, she was a matriarch, so, yes, the family goes back a ways, and I just hope I can do the job my Uncle Don did. And he very well represented the city in his travels with my Aunt Lois across the country. He was always passing out the cards and talking about the San Clemente and everybody should come and see us, and he was great that way, so I just hope I can do the job he did. Thanks.
Okay. Next is a report from the Public Works Director concerning initiation of changes to metered parking hours of operation.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Bain and members of the city council, Tom Bonnigat, Public Works Director. This item is follow-up to your council's direction to initiate changes to metered parking as was just announced. I gave a little bit of background in the staff report. Basically, this is the resolution that is required for staff to submit an application to the Coastal Commission to start that process. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise, we will continue that if you move the item.
Yeah, if there's no question or comment cards, I was going to make a motion.
I have. Go ahead.
I have one quick question. I noticed for the pure bowl, we had it at 9:00, and I thought we discussed taking that to 10:00 PM, I thought, but if not, would everybody agree to move that to 10:00 PM? I think that was the recommendation from the CAC, the Coastal Advisory Committee, and unless any reason not to do it to 10:00, so.
I saw that was the recommendation.
Yes, 10:00 PM for better consistency with other coastal cities.
But we talked about doing it just, even across the board, so we don't have confusion of where you're at. I'm comfortable with all the technical requirements for a change.
Sorry, folks, real quick, can you guys close the door, please, so we can hear? So, I would be, that's fine with me.
Consistency is good.
The consistency that you offer.
Sure. That's a good suggestion. I would agree to that as well.
So, the direction?
So, the direction would be across the board, instead of 9:00 PM, make it 10:00 PM.
So, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM would be the council's desire?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I'm hearing, yes, consistency, so there's no confusion.
Sounds good.
And then, we talked about a lock box, about 10% of the parking revenue to be locked for future parking. Can we talk about that? I thought we were going to do that. I thought we were in, had consensus on that, or we were going to bring that back another time. Do you know, Mayor Pro Tem Bain?
Yeah, Laura, if I, I'll address that concern. I think it's outlined here in the report, so what we talked about doing was we looked at the last five years of revenue.
Right.
And any revenue that we receive in the year following this new change in our metered parking hours operation and cost, that monies would be set aside for future parking improvements, specifically in the technology area.
We have technology, but not parking, not parking per se, just technology.
I think we want to keep it very narrow to discourage any future litigation.
Okay, that's fine. Do you have something to add, James?
I was under the impression that it was for technological improvements, whether that's app-based meters, stuff like that.
That was, I think I was the one that proposed that, that was my intention.
I'm good with that, thanks. Okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you so much.
And for the council's clarification, so that will, that's related but separate to the process of getting the Coastal Commission approval. Once we go through that, we will come back to your council with the municipal code changes that address the parking, metered hour parking changes and your desire to reserve the revenue. So, you'll get a crack at that when we do the ordinance update later this year, whenever we're done with Coastal.
Okay, pending no cards, I'm going to make a motion. Okay, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 1926, entitled Resolution, the City Council of San Clemente, California authorizing city staff to submit an application to the California Coastal Commission to permit changes to metered parking hours of operation with the amended change as noted by Councilwoman Ferguson from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM for all future metered parking areas. Motion by Councilmember Hamm, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Pass him.
Okay, the next item was proposed modifications to the council agenda template and policy and procedure relating to council meeting and operating procedures. It was on the original agenda, but after the original agenda was posted, a decision was made to not put it on the revised agenda, so that item is off. I did have a speaker card for that item, but.
We hold that until we consider the item.
Okay. And same thing with the next item, which is?
And I can invite that speaker then to speak in the second oral communications if they want to speak on that.
It's Jim Bieber, he already had a one for oral, I think, the second time. Okay. And same thing for item C, it's just on the agenda so that people would understand it was on the first one, but it's not on this one. That was proposed modifications to the records management program. So, item D is report from the city attorney concerning ordinances to amend ordinances permitting limited public camping on the city public works yard to expire on June 30th, 2020.
Mayor Pro Tem, yeah, mayor and council, this is brought back to you in response to direction from the city council at its last meeting. What these ordinances do is put a sunset on the interim exception to the citywide ban on public camping. So, the general rule is that you cannot camp anywhere in the city. The council adopted two special ordinances two meetings ago that allowed that under limited circumstances at the city yard. What this does is provides outside dates, well, an outside date of June 30th, 2020, at which point, all camping in the yard will have to end, and that won't be considered an urgency transitional encampment anymore. So, by, there's an urgency ordinance that takes effect immediately, a backup regular ordinance. The first is presented for your adoption, it needs four votes to pass. The second one's a conventional ordinance, and it's recommended that you introduce it this evening.
Okay, I have, any questions of Scott? Okay, I have one comment card, Susan Smith.
Councilmembers, you guys have an ethical fiduciary and legal responsibility to the members of the public, to our city, to our children and our grandchildren, so San Clemente can continue being a great beach community and city that it is, beautiful and economically sound with great business and investment opportunities and home values that continue to rise rather than decline. I'm sure that you guys are familiar with an incident where families called really recently to the homeless camp because there are reports that people are coming to San Clemente now because they can camp by the beach for free. As a matter of fact, if you look at the newspaper articles, you can look up homeless or camping in San Clemente, and it says, if you're homeless, San Clemente has a free campground for you. And, you know, we're not only affecting home values, but we're inviting everybody and their dog to come camp in San Clemente. Earlier, we had a nice comment from Jordan, who mentioned Tulsa, Arizona, I have no idea where he's from or why he's allowed to camp in the San Clemente campgrounds. But, in case you guys aren't aware, the homeless also have other ways to communicate, to figure out where to go, how to go, and whatnot. Going to quickly read an excerpt from a guy in Ohio who posted online, and he said, "Well, I'm leaving Ohio at the beginning of the month when my disability is deposited. I was looking forward to camping near the ocean until the housing is accomplished. Why is it an issue if I choose to reside at the beach? I believe it would benefit my generalized anxiety. I'm guessing you enjoy the beach. I would also bet that if you're an avid skateboarder or roller skater, you'd probably have an issue with the homeless in parking lots." Really? "I'll keep in mind my hindrance to all those judgmental dew writers as I find a spot where the general populace gathers to enjoy what is freely given by God for all to enjoy." So, while I appreciate the one-year ordinance, I want you all to consider what kind of economic damage you're going to bring to San Clemente by inviting homeless people to come camp out for free at the beach. It is something that is irresponsible, and it's going to hurt the city for years to come. You guys are smart people. You don't have to be a real estate agent to know that that's going to affect home values. You don't have to be a counselor to know it's going to affect children at a park when you've got mentally disabled people running around. So, what I would like you to do is I would like you to impose a six-month limit on it and also, at the end of that six months, have an emergency shelter in place where it can be indoor and less palatable for people to move here and be homeless on our dime. Thank you.
Senator Smith. Any other cards? Motion? Yeah. I move that we adopt ordinance Number 1675, entitled Urgency Ordinance, and the ordinance Number 1673, the city of San Clemente, finding that exigent circumstances relating to the immediate threats to the public health, safety, and welfare require amendment to ordinance Number 1673 relating to the enforcement of the provisions of San Clemente Missile Code, Chapter 8.86 prohibiting camping on public property except as permitted herein. Hold on. And then, number two, introduce ordinance Number 1676, entitled ordinance of the city of San Clemente, amending ordinance Number 1674, finding that exigent circumstances relating to immediate threats to the public health, safety, and welfare require amendment to ordinance Number 1673 relating to enforcement of the provisions of San Clemente Missile Code, Chapter 8.86 prohibiting camping on public property except as permitted herein.
Second.
Just a quick housekeeping, does that need to specify in the ordinance itself, the one-year limitation? I saw it elsewhere, but I did not see it there.
Let me find it. Let me find the actual amendment, yeah. So, the first urgency ordinance is on 8D-5, the Section 9, well, Section 2 of this ordinance amends Section 9, so that instead of, so that it adds a new text that says it shall expire on June 30th, 2020. You got that one?
I do, I just want to make sure it doesn't need to be specified in what we're actually reading, the ordinance that we're reading entitled.
No, because you waived reading of the ordinance itself, thank you, yeah, I understand.
So, the motion by? Councilmember Hamm, the second by Councilmember Ward, all in favor? Aye.
Report from the city manager concerning an update to the city's vehicle use policy.
All right, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, Mike Johnston, management analyst with the city manager's office. The item before you is an update to the, on the city's vehicle use policy. On March 5th, 2019, staff brought forth the report highlighting the city's vehicle use policy, and at that meeting, city council provided direction for staff to update the policy to include a reference to the city's discipline policy and scan other Orange County cities to ensure our policy is aligned with theirs. So, per council's direction, staff amended the city's vehicle use policy, Policy 1002-1, Section 4.5, to include a reference to Section 14.5, authorized disciplinary actions of the city's personnel policies and procedures manual. In addition to the policy revision, council has staff to review the vehicle use policies of other similar cities in Orange County. For that review, staff researched cities of Irvine, Newport, Lake Forest, Mission Viejo, Tustin, and one non-Orange County city, Long Beach, which is in LA County. Of the city's researched, only two had policies that specifically spoke to the use of city vehicles, and those were included in the agenda report, those were Mission Viejo and Long Beach. And through the scan, staff found that Mission Viejo and Long Beach had procedures similar to those included in the city of San Clemente's policy. And actually, in most instances, the city of San Clemente's policy is much more detailed in its procedures dictating how city vehicles are to be used by city employees. So, with that said, staff recommends that the city council provide direction to the city manager regarding the city's vehicle use policy. That concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions?
Yes, James, have we ever looked at cities that just did away with their vehicles altogether and just reimbursed for mileage? Seems like that'd be a more simplistic way to go and eliminate controversies and discipline and all that, just let people use their own vehicles and be reimbursed for mileage.
We do do that for employees that don't receive a vehicle allowance, they're reimbursed for mileage.
Those who don't receive a vehicle, but have we looked at any cities, are there cities out there, maybe, Michael, you could answer this, any cities out there that just did away with the vehicles? Because you found two policies, so I'm wondering, what about the others? Do they not have city vehicles for transportation? And maybe they did away with them and just use personal vehicles now and reimburse with mileage reimbursement?
Sure, I wasn't able to find kind of a history of how they got to where they were at, but in the cities that didn't have specific guidelines for how cities operate, like pool vehicles, for instance, I would assume that it's because they don't operate pool vehicles in their city, and so, it's my experience, having worked for other cities, that they do reimburse, much like the city of San Clemente, based on mileage. So, I didn't speak directly with the staff of those cities to find out the history of the vehicle use policy and how they reimburse for mileage in their city, but in my experience in working for other cities, that's a common practice.
Okay, thank you. I know that was the task that you were assigned to do, and maybe we can think about that in the future, just having people. use personal vehicles now and reimburse with mileage reimbursement?
Sure, I wasn't able to find kind of a history of how they got to where they were at, but in the cities that didn't have specific guidelines for how cities operate, like pool vehicles, for instance, I would assume that it's because they don't operate pool vehicles in their city, and so, it's my experience, having worked for other cities, that they do reimburse, much like the City of San Clemente, based on mileage. So, I didn't speak directly with the staff of those cities to find out the history of the vehicle use policy and how they reimburse for mileage in their city, but in my experience in working for other cities, that's a common practice.
Okay, thank you. I know that was the task that you were assigned to do, and maybe we can think about that in the future, and just having people use their vehicles and get reimbursed and just get rid of the city-owned vehicles and the maintenance of all those as well. Thanks, another time, though.
Any other questions, comments, motion? Okay.
So, receive, receive the report? Perfect, check. Thanks.
Report from the Assistant City Manager concerning an update on city commissions and committees.
All right, hello again. All right, so the item before you is an update on the city's commissions and committees, and on February 19th, 2019, staff had agendized an item to review and discuss the topic and structure, composition and performance of the city's commissions and committees. It was at that meeting that the City Council decided to create its own subcommittee to review the city's commissions and committees and put forth recommendations for adjustments to their structure. Now, pursuant to that direction provided by the City Council in February, the newly-created City Council Subcommittee comprised of Mayor Protem Dan Bane and Councilmember Kathy Ward, met with staff the week of April 15th to review and discuss the current structure and performance of the city's commissions and committees, and the following recommendations were made by the subcommittee. So, with regard to all commissions and committees, the recommendation was to develop an annual work plan with specific goals and objectives for the year. The finalized work plan with recommendations would be taken to the City Council for approval. Amendments to the work plan would require Council approval. All current vacancies on any of the city's commissions and committees would be filled with one-year appointments. In the year 2020, the Coastal Advisory, Golf Course, Human Affairs, BPR Committees would reduce from seven members to five members, and all advisory committees should, or shall have meetings limited to two hours unless otherwise approved by a vote of the committee and department staff. Now, with regards to the city's BPR Commission, there were changes that pertained just to that commission, and that was that meetings would be held on a bimonthly basis. For the Golf Course Committee and Human Affairs Committee, the recommendations were that their meetings would be held on a quarterly basis. For the Coastal Advisory Committee, the recommendation was that that committee would be shifted to an ad hoc committee and that they would meet on an as-needed basis based off of the pre-approved work plan. And historically, the Coastal Advisor Committee had had a BPR representative on there, and it was being recommended that that BPR representative be removed from the committee. The Investment Advisory Committee, the recommendation was that meetings would be held quarterly, that they would remove one industry specialist, currently there are two serving on there, one would be removed, and that the total makeup of the committee would be seven members, five appointed by the City Council, one treasurer, and one specialist appointed by the treasurer. And then, lastly, the subcommittee recommended that, recommended the creation of a new Public Safety Committee. This Public Safety Committee would be an ad hoc committee, it would be a group of technical professionals. They would review the performance measures and make recommendations to the council, and their body would be made up of seven members, five appointed by the City Council, one OCSD, Orange County Sheriff's Department representative, and one industry expert voted on by the City Council. So, that concludes the summary of the subcommittee's recommendations from April, and I just wanted to note one thing before we move into public comment. Staff would like to kind of propose a revision to the recommendation that was included in the agenda report. As it reads right now, it states, "Staff recommends to direct the city clerk to revise the San Clemente Municipal Code to incorporate the recommendations put forth by the Subcommittee of City Council with regard to the city's commissions and committees." And we would like to revise that recommendation to say, "Direct the city clerk to draft an ordinance for future council consideration to incorporate the recommendations put forth by the Subcommittee of the City Council with regard to the city's commissions and committees." So, I just wanted to make that special note, it's a minor tweak in the language, but that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions before we go to?
Speaker.
Speaker, do we have speaker cards?
Stand by.
Susan?
Oh, my brain up here?
Step right on up.
A little discombobulated, my lift ride got a flat tire on the freeway. Yes, that's a wonderful place to be. So, I'm sounding a little scattered, I've been out there for over an hour. Anyway, let me, let me move forward. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you and address this issue with you. At our Coastal Advisory Committee, last Thursday, we learned that this ordinance, or this action was coming up about specifically the restructuring as it applies to us, the Coastal Advisory Committee. I have to tell you, upon hearing the news, the members reacted initially with shock and confusion that our committee was given an ad hoc status, since none of us, including the staff, had any inkling of the drastic change in our committee operation. After discussing the pros and cons, it was clear the committee was unanimously not in favor of supporting this change, voicing concern that this restructuring, and restructuring, rather, could reduce the transparency our community has enjoyed and expected of our coastal environmental programs, as well as our coastal resources and solid waste programs. In addition, it appeared that without a regular meeting schedule, the meetings would be based upon an as-needed on-call basis, which would cause significant scheduling problems for our members, pardon me, I left the rubber finger at home. Members of our community. In fact, getting a quorum would be very difficult, as all of our employees have work schedules or other life commitments that make short notice meetings very hard to fit into an already organized work and family life, as many of you know yourselves. We have made thousands of new friends and advocates for clean oceans, clean beaches, with people living and visiting our city over the years who participate in the city-sponsored and/or supported Earth Day, Coastal Cleanup Day, Ocean Festival, Fiesta Days activities. Many return every year to enjoy and participate in these activities, letting those of us, they know by name, they're coming, or calling, you know, approaching me in the grocery store saying, "How many people can I take to this beach cleanup?" And I said, "As many as you can fit in your cars or walk down to the beach with." They're very excited about being part of the community. We have a very positive proactive presence in the city, and we are concerned that this image of an ad hoc committee where we're not as available would be changed into one of a reactive SOS committee, responding only as needed to coastal environmental issues rather than giving the consistent service we provide now and we have had for years. We feel that we've had our fingers on the pulse of important coastal issues and are always responsive to immediate concerns related to these issues as quickly as we learn of them. To this end, as Jereen noted to all of you City Council members in her recent letter, we have written an extensive work plan to focus our work defining key issues that align with the mission statement the city created for the CAC and identifying annual priorities. We approved this work plan at our, oh dear, at our June Coastal Advisory Committee meeting. May I have 30 more seconds?
Very, very quickly.
We're mostly concerned about the idea of losing the transparency that we've worked so hard to obtain in the city. You know, as well as we do, that transparency in any kind of issue, and particularly with the enjoyment that our coastline receives is very important. Without that avenue to let people know what's going on, they can read about it, they can see about it in all kinds of social media, including the SC Times, or see us on the street and ask, we're concerned that we would lose that. Therefore, we ask that you remove the ad hoc status from our committee, return us to an advisory committee status regular, and we're asking for six meetings a year with the privilege or the opportunity to ask for special meetings as needed.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the extra time.
Any other speaking, speaker cards? So, did you want to start? Okay, so I'll start. So, thank you, Susan, we met, myself, you, and John, yesterday for an hour, so I do understand your concerns, and so I want to back up to provide some context for what the goal was here. So, the goal back in February was to look at reorganizing, reorganizing some of these committees and commissions, wasn't a cost-saving endeavor, it was really an efficiency. And you can see from the staff report, the very first thing that we want all of the committees and commissions to do is to develop a work plan, to bring it back to the City Council as the policy body of the city to provide the blessing moving forward, because what we don't want is sort of our committees and commissions fledgling around, not knowing what work we want them to do. So, that was priority number one, and I'm very happy that you folks were already working on a work plan that we'll take a look at and hopefully approve. The ad hoc, as I explained to you yesterday, was not intended as a slighter to make your committee less important, it was to provide flexibility based on the work plan. You could meet twice a month, once a month, it really didn't matter, it was really dependent upon the work, and I think you understood that when I explained it to you. But, with that said, I'm agreeable to going back to a bimonthly, so once every other month, meeting schedule with the ability to put special meetings on calendar if it warrants, and I think you folks have also agreed to limit it to two hours, because we want to get the work done efficiently and with a work plan every year. So, I'm fine with that. We also got comments from Tyler Bowden and Paula Cole, which I appreciated. You know, when we first met, we hadn't really moved as far along with the homeless issues and the town halls, so I would be supportive of going back for the Human Affairs Commission, Committee for now, to a monthly meeting. I'm sorry, was it bimonthly? Sorry, I'm, I'm, yeah, bimonthly meeting, as they were, given that the homeless issues are important. So, I got questions about why did we go to seven to five? So, originally, Councilmember Ward and I talked with staff to doing a different approach to appointing commission members based on a one council member to one commission person type of approach, where we each get to appoint our own representatives on our commissions. And the thought process was, we can all do our investigation, our research about who we think would be great for that role. It would save time in terms of the interview process, because we would take applications individually amongst ourselves, find people that we think would be good, and there would be some accountability on a one-to-one basis on how those folks are operating. So, that's why we went from seven to five. I understand from a couple of the comments we got that there's, you know, Brown Act concerns of, hey, how are three of us now going to talk? Well, we operate the four of us under those same sort of limitations with the Brown Act, so I don't think that's an issue. The only commission that I think personally would warrant seven members is the Planning Commission, who has design review board responsibility that require committee meetings that would need three, so they don't want to follow the Brown Act, I think that's important. But, that's why we went to five. And again, the goal was to make these meetings more efficient, to alleviate some of the staff time that was going in, there should be no reason why a lot of these meetings went four-plus hours, and that was the goal. So, I think that should hopefully be a good background and context for what the proposals are here. I'm happy to answer any questions of my fellow council members about why we did certain things, but certainly the intent, again, Susan, was not to place any less value on what the Coastal Advisory Committee or any other committees are doing, it was to try to make these flexibility determinations based on work plans that will hopefully help you develop. That's it.
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to comment on the two of you, thanks for bringing this together, thanks for working together on this. If I listen to oral communications, I would think you guys are deadly enemies, so, thanks for the work you put into this for the community. One of the issues that didn't get addressed by you two in the Subcommittee that I was hoping was going to be addressed was term limits. I know that's a touchy subject, something I've brought up multiple times, being that this is going to be an ordinance brought back by Joanne at some future date, hopefully I can get support to have this option included in the proposed resolution information, and my ask would be that for the Golf Course Committee, that we put term limits of eight years. Golf Course Committee is one of the areas where we get a ton of people interested, and fortunately for us, we have a lot of good Golf Course Committee members, but it tends to become stagnant, we don't give opportunities to everybody who would like to participate. So, I think if we put an eight-year term limit on that, then they'd have to take a two-year break, a hiatus, and then they could come back, it would allow us the opportunity to put some new blood in there and give other people opportunities to volunteer their time. I'm not requesting it for any other committees or commissions, just the Golf Course, so if we could throw that option in there, I'd appreciate it.
I like the idea for new blood and term limits, and eight years is great, but if we're going to do that for one committee or commission, I think we need to do them for all, I couldn't support it just for one.
Also, here's, here's my thoughts on that, Laura, and I appreciate where you come from, because I think most times I would agree with that sentiment, but in this scenario, Golf Course Committee consistently has multiple applications over what we're asking for, and so consistently returning people away where a lot of the other commissions and committees don't have that same situation, so I'd hate to inhibit or lose somebody that would otherwise be volunteering their time in a position that no one else is volunteering, and otherwise, I would support your sentiment also, but Golf Course Committee is just the one over the last seven years that's continually, we have more people applying than seats are available.
So, I guess my response to that is it depends on how we, are we going to keep doing sort of the majority interview approach, are we going to go to the one-to-one appointee? Because I think if we go to the appointee, then I think there is going to be some new blood turnover based on who the council decides to pick, like you could pick somebody completely new, and so could I, and I likely would.
I think I, I think I misunderstood what you were saying, your recommendation, and I thought the one-to-one was for Planning Commission and Investment.
Across the board.
Oh.
So, that was, so, so, sorry, more context. Originally, this had another recommendation, and so, you know, then Kathy and I talked, and we decided to remove the recommendation so we could have a robust discussion here. But originally, the recommendation was going to be, let's each appoint our own representatives on each of the committees and commissions. That got pulled back for a discussion here, and I was just trying to explain, that's why the number got moved to five, except for, you'll see two exceptions to that, and the concern was, like, if we leave some of these committees and commissions as seven, then there's sort of two holdovers that we've got to figure out how to appoint, since there's five of us generally and not seven. So, that, that was the thought process. So, if you had the one-to-one, you each get to appoint somebody, I think a lot of those concerns that you just expressed could be alleviated, so.
So, here's, I guess, here's my thoughts on the cuff on that one is, I, in the notes that you just provided at the beginning of this, I thought I heard you say Planning Commission and Investment Advisory were the two that were going that way, and then we'd stick with the others being appointed by the majority of council the way we've done in the past. I'm absolutely supportive of the Planning Commission and Investment Advisory, I think that's a great direction. I don't know at this time that I'm going to be supportive of every committee and commission going that route.
Going the route of the one-to-one.
Yeah, one-to-one.
I'm actually concerned of how that would work. You mentioned that everybody would just apply to us, so would Joanne open it up, and then we'd be hit with all of these applications from everyone, or are we supposed to go out and research and find someone? I'm concerned that council would not have the time to do all that for each and every single committee. I'm thinking it's going to make it more difficult for every single one.
Can I jump in for a second, Dan? I think one of the, one of the things I do like about it is, in terms of Planning Commission and Investment Advisory, I think those are very two key, two key roles within the community, that we have the opportunity through our outreach to know people that would be excellent members for both those communities, or both those committees or commissions. But the other ones, I would still like to encourage the masses of people to apply for those positions, so it's, it's not a mambo's been, or, you know, somebody who you know really well is going to get this position. It encourages openness and invites everybody from the community, from the community to participate in government. So, I think that's why initially I thought your idea of those two was a great idea, and then we leave the rest up to the masses.
The only other comment I have is on a Public Safety Committee at this time. We just, last year, we hired two officers, and now we're looking at tonight adding two more. We're not quite sure how, I mean, the lieutenant doesn't even have them yet, how this is all going to work, so I'm not really sure what, any technical professionals, what they would be reviewing at this time. Seems too soon to me to do.
Well, you stole my thunder on that one, I was going to ask too that we delay the Public Safety until our first meeting in December, and that way, we have all five council members, and we have the ability to appoint, if we decide to appoint, the way you're speaking, add that one in as a third committee where we appoint members. But I was going to ask that we postpone that one until we have a full board of five council members at the end of this year, and I think that still gives them enough time before next budget ramp up, the next contract season, and all that stuff to actually look over the issues and, and deliver a consensus for us.
Okay. Laura, do you have any? So, I just want to back up on the Public Safety Committee. So, this was an important one for me, and part of the reason why I wanted to sort of revamp these committees and commissions was to free up staff time to add this committee, because I think what we hear time and time again, and we heard again tonight, is Public Safety is a huge issue in the community, and certainly it's something I ran on, and the idea here is to do a little bit- And the idea here is to do a little bit different approach than the committee last time. I don't want you, or me, or any councilmember or other commissioner to be on this committee. I want it to truly to be an expert committee of, we've got, I mean, Rick is here, we've got a tremendous amount of expertise from former police officers, chiefs, you know, you name it, across the board. FBI members that have the ability to go out and evaluate, what are other cities doing? How are they staffing their police departments? What is the level of service we need? Because, you know, we keep constantly getting thrown different numbers of deputies and all that, and I'd like to actually have an expert committee that we can point that we're not paying Matrix to go out and evaluate this for us. And I'd like to see it now because I think it shows to the community, like, hey, we're getting ahead of next year, the budgeting cycle. Because what I'm afraid of is the budgeting cycle is going to start again, what, next March, April, May? And they're going to have two or three meetings to really dive into that. So I think the sooner the better. But look, if that's what I have to do to get this committee in, and the horse training I have to do, I will. But I just think it's incredibly important to the community, and I went through the last process, and I don't think any of us on this dais or any other committee have the expertise now to do the job that we would ask of them. And I think it would be a very specific work plan. So to the extent that you folks are worried about this going off the rails into one direction or another, I think we designate what the work plan is. That's why it's designated as an ad hoc committee. We give them what we want them to evaluate, and they go execute, so.
Well, so, Dan, I appreciate your comments. Would you mind if we tackled the low-hanging fruit now, and then we can address that one, since that sounds like it's going to be the sticking point for the majority of us?
Sure.
So I didn't sound like you had any concerns with the comments that I made in terms of your appointees versus which ones, and I didn't hear any concerns about, other than Laura's.
No, I mean, if you want to do those two committees and commissions, I mean, I'm not worried about with Planning Committee. Can you remind me what our recommendation was coming out of that committee? For which? For the appointments, the one-to-one, what our recommendation was? Because I honestly don't remember this one. For which committee and commission, all of them? Well, for all of them. So we came out with a recommendation of, hey, let's do, one councilmember appoints one committee member commissioner. Yep, that's it. So. For all of them? Yep, one commission. What did we do about Planning Commission? So Planning Commission, there would be two at-large. So you'd have five members that each person on the city council gets to select a member, and then two at-large positions that you all would vote on and a majority would select.
She's stuck there.
So any of the ones that had more than the five members, that was kind of the recommendation, was that at-large, everyone votes on?
So then I'm going to re-clarify what I said, which is, we do the five appointees for Planning Commission and the five appointees for Investment Advisory. And then the rest of the positions would be at-large, and we'd host interviews for those. And then also, I'm asking that we include in the resolution the eight-year term limit for a golf course committee, and then if at the time we decide we don't have support for that, then we don't have to vote for it when it comes back in resolution form from Joanne.
I like the term limit on just the one. That's why I like the one-to-one so much, is because I think it deals with that issue.
Yeah.
If I'm going to lose on that, it's sort of, I'm just like, let's fine.
So let me, so I think that's why, if we put it as an option in the resolution, it gives you time to bake it out, because I know I'm putting you on the spot here with it, just like I'm being put on the spot with the five, one-for-one. So we can all think about it. We have an opportunity to discuss it.
So you're going to do both of those for consideration, then? The one-to-one, or are you just talking about?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, that's, look at that little spin right there. You must be an attorney.
Yeah. So you want to try that? Because I'll tell you what, what I can do as part of that is, you know, Irvine uses this model, there's a couple of others that use the model, and appoint after each election. And I'll bring that in, and we can talk about how that works. I'll have staff do that.
Staff could bring that back on how that actually all works, because I'm still not sure, like Coastal Advisory, how that would work. Because we get so many good, we don't get a lot, but we get some good applicants that I would not know to call.
Yeah. So I think, Dan, I guess then I'll back down from my position if you back down from yours. So I'm not going to ask for a term limit for the golf course committee if you'll back down to those two commissions and committees.
Sure.
Okay? Perfect. So we're clear on that one. And then the Public Safety Task Force, so, or the Public Safety Subcommittee, what do you call it? Ad hoc committee, is that what you're calling it?
Well, it's the Public Safety.
So, I mean, if we did, if we did put that forth in resolution that came back before us at a future council meeting, how would you propose that we, I mean, at this point, we'd have to appoint because, so I, I'm comfortable doing it, I just think it'd be better suited when we have all five councilmembers. So that way, I'm completely willing to put on the first meeting in December, so that way, when it comes before us, it's the five of us, and we vote, and we, I'm sorry, we appoint.
When's our F T P for next year?
L T F P.
Our L T F P?
February.
March.
You know, I also want to say that in regards to the Public Safety Committee, I did meet with Sheriff Barnes a couple weeks ago, and he mentioned that he's going to be looking at our contract and service model in San Clemente. And he's probably four to five months out from coming back to the city of San Clemente with ideas from the sheriff's department.
So your thought process there is, we would wait until we get their report to have a committee in?
I don't want to, you know, overshoot the four of you, but I'm just telling you what the sheriff told me and how that plays into the discussion with a new ad hoc committee. You know, would it be better to have them ready to go when he has his report, so they can start working on that right away?
So if I go down in flames, I'll fight. But I think it's incredibly important, then, given that we're going to have the new budgeting process starting so early.
Yeah.
If we wait until December, we're not even going to have people onboarded until likely we're already starting the new budget. And my concern is, we get a report from O C S D, we want that evaluated, we don't have anyone in place to evaluate that.
Well, so I'm willing to make a concession and say that I agree with your five appointed members. And so why don't we initiate our appointments in November, so that way, come December, we already have the people up to speed and ready to go.
Okay, so now I'm confused. Now we're going back to the one-to-one for city councils, or for Planning Commission, Investment Advisory, and now the Public Safety Task Force, our subcommittee. Everyone else is still a majority. The two at-large from Planning Commission, we interview. Then you want an eight-year term limit on?
I backed down from that because we're negotiating here.
Just making sure.
Yeah, yeah.
But you don't want the Public Safety Committee until November? Point in November.
So, yeah, so I mean, that way, they're up and running, so we can take care of all the administrative stuff, so that way, by the time we have any councilmembers.
If that gets the Public Safety Task Force for you and me, then I will agree to that.
Okay. Perfect. So I'll make that recommendation.
I just want to make one point. We tried to get industry professionals the last time, and we started out with actually some pretty good people, battalion chiefs and things like that. And then it did not work out. They did not stay with it. So it will be very important, to me, this has to be industry specialists looking at this. I don't want laypeople doing this, because this is what we need. We need technical advice. So it has to be that.
Four people I found, so I can fill all of our appointments.
Well, I might need some help on that. But I might have, I might have one person. But I just, you know, the detail, the work plan has to be very detailed, I think, coming from them, helping us what it should be, because I think some of these retired people, they're not going to put up with all these long meetings and things like that. So this time, let's try to really make it a technical advisory.
Okay. So I'm going to attempt to build this motion.
And so the two-hour limitation would also apply to Public Safety, I think, as well.
Okay. So my direction's going to be, not clean, but the first direction's going to be that the changes that were implemented by Air Pro Tem Bain in discussion with Mrs. Ambrose's points, that it go back to bi-monthly, and that I have a two-hour max on it, and that the committees stay the same size. Is that what it's going to be for the Human Affairs State? That doesn't change in size? Is that correct?
Nothing changes until 2020.
Okay, perfect. So those changes will be incorporated in the resolution. We will convert to council-appointed positions for the five positions on the Planning Commission, the Investment Advisory, and the newly established Public Safety Ad hoc Committee that we're forming. And the ad hoc committee, the ramp-up for the four of us will start in November in preparation for the newly appointed councilmember in December. And there was one more.
So Human Affairs Committee will go back to a bi-monthly?
Yeah, that was the first thing I said.
I thought you said Coastal Advisory, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Human Affairs, yep. And then, do we want to remove the ad hoc status on one of them?
That was, Coastal Advisory Committee was not going to be ad hoc anymore, it's going to be bi-monthly.
Okay, there we go. So that's my motion.
With actually everything that Michael said, we have to add that. Michael, if you want to put it in.
So, yeah, so my motion is that Joanne's office come back with a resolution for us that can be adopted with the incorporated changes that we discussed this evening that I outlined two minutes ago.
Clear as mud, Joanne?
Yes, I'm trying to write some of this in my head now. How long are their terms going to be?
It'll fly with the seated councilmember.
Oh, no, 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 term limits, yeah. No term limits, but, yeah, terms.
Yeah, it'll fly. It'll fly with the terms of the councilmembers, for clarity, and this is all going to come back to us in resolution that you're going to.
So in other words, if there's four years left on your term, your person serves for four years.
Exactly.
They serve at the pleasure of that council.
And then the two extra seats on Planning Commission will be appointed just the same as normal, and then the rest of the seats that are not appointed on all other the committees.
Would those be staggered, then?
Those would be staggered, just like they've always been. So there'll be no change.
So no changes on those, no changes on the at-large?
Yep.
Those still have two-year terms?
Yep. We're not going to change them, we're not addressing them.
Okay. Just trying to think of this stuff now, so when I write it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So that's my motion.
All right. Second? I'll second it. Motion by Councilmember Ray Hammond, second by me, all in favor. I have those passes for it. We're going to take a quick break, or a short break. Five minutes. (end of transcript) Folks, I'm going to call a meeting back to order. Thank you.
The next item is a report from the city attorney concerning consideration of an ordinance relating to rules for transitional camps.
Thanks, Mayor and counsel. Just quickly, this was alluded to earlier also. Currently, as the city opened up the transitional camp, it adopted and posted house rules that apply to occupancy in the camp. If you breach the house rules, then you can be evicted from the camp. What was, we wanted to recommend in addition to that, was making compliance with these rules required under the city's municipal code. And so, what this does is codifies those rules, so that if you violate them, you not only can be evicted from the camp, but you can be cited for a misdemeanor violation of the municipal code. So, it's here for introduction, for sure.
Do you have a card?
No.
Yes, yes, yes.
Maura? Did Maura? From, card for Maura?
Yeah, this is item 9A, right? Or was it?
Yeah, this is 9A.
I didn't get any cards for 9A. Did you put down oral? I handed it to you, I'm sorry. You handed me two cards. Yes, one was 9A and one was public comment.
So, I have one, I have one 9A, right? Credit, let me set up these, right?
Is it me?
Maura.
Okay.
So, we set up the public, public comment.
Okay.
Thank you. So, I'm Maura Mikulak, and I'm a resident of Capistrano Beach, and a lifelong resident of San Clemente and Capo Beach. I always have to throw that in. So, I just want to make a few quick comments on this issue, and I didn't hear public comment before, so I don't know what anybody has already said about this. Okay, so, facilities need rules. Most all facilities have rules, and rules should be enforced, as is, seems fit for the facility. And then laws, we already have laws. Laws are necessary, and if laws are broken, then we enforce the laws. But if we can do something standing on PICO in front of the camping lot, and it's not an infraction or misdemeanor, then it shouldn't be a legal infraction for people on the other side of the fence. This just seems discriminatory to me. Also additionally, some of the rules don't seem appropriate, like, you know, like lighters, for example. I mean, even the TSA allows us to have lighters. And there are a few more that don't seem appropriate to me, and I think they need to be looked at. But again, lest I be misunderstood, as often happens, I enforce the rules in the facility, enforce the laws, but if we can do something standing on PICO in front of the lot and not be breaking the law, then it shouldn't be a citable offense inside the lot. And on a completely different topic, kind of, I just want to say that, among other needs, the current site desperately needs shade and water, among other things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jim Bieber.
I want to thank the council for allowing the public to weigh in on this matter, and addressing the homeless situation, and debating it and discussing it openly in public. And I think that takes real leadership, which makes me reflect on somebody that has none. And I'll go back to the bizarro memo that Kathy Ward sent to the John and Ken Show about 1:00 in the morning. "The Orange County sheriffs have stopped and refused to uphold our ordinances." Goes on to say that it wasn't until the sheriffs wussed out on us that our program stopped working. Now, about 1:00 in the morning, you know, maybe that's when the ambient and red wine kick in, and you write something really loopy, but the next day, you write back to the John and Ken Show, or actually, James's $370,000 employee, his assistant writes back to the John and Ken Show on your behalf, and you say that you can't do an interview on John and Ken to discuss, in your thoughts, or about what the city's doing on the homeless issue, because due to pending litigation, I will not be able to provide you with an interview. And I stand by my email from yesterday, that the police are wusses, because they're not enforcing an ordinance that would get our city into legal trouble. You go on to say that I hope you can understand the legal reasons why I cannot provide an interview. So, what has changed, Mr. Attorney, with the lawsuit that we're facing, that now the public can weigh in on this? We've had town hall meetings, we've had items before the public. What legal constraints was Kathy Ward addressing that she refused to discuss it with the public? None. It's a crazy, crazy pathology. And I'll get back to you filing a police report against a resident who spoke here using a prop that was a machete. Ten months later, you claim that you're suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder, that you get a physical reaction from it. I wish that was your only mental health issue, because that's treatable. You said in the OC Weekly, or, excuse me, that's another series of lies, you said in the SE Times, "My report to the sheriff was confidential, and on that I have no comment." I called the sheriff's department today, records department. Here is your crazy police report that you gobbled up sheriff's time with.
Jim, just real quick.
Yeah.
So, we're on this item, if you can tie this to the item we're on, the agenda item.
Sure. We need rules, and we need leadership, and we don't need somebody who's going to lie, who has apparently as many mental problems as the people we're dealing with in that camp.
Right. Any other speaker cards for this item, 9A?
Okay, if there's no comments from council, I'll make it.
I have comments, if I may. As discussed earlier, and our city manager did confirm, the sheriff deputies have the authority to go on the campsite and deal with issues, whether it's harassment, or bullying, or illicit drugs, or whatever. And so, now we have, we have these rules, which rules, you know, instill order, and rules can be broken, but they need education, people at the campsite, and so forth, but to criminalize things, their rules, and incorporate those into an ordinance when we already have laws, I think is not only redundant, but we're also targeting a specific population because they're at the campsite, but we're not doing the same at the beach, or these same rules are applying to the beach, or to the parks, and the playgrounds, and so forth. So, I point that out, because I just think this is a lawsuit waiting to happen, when we're doing that, and we're improperly targeting one group of the population because they're here at the campsite, and we already have laws on the books. I don't know why we're doing this, because I think it's just no different than targeting someone for their race, or their religious beliefs, and so forth. So, I just think this is a really bad approach. I was surprised to see this, I didn't expect this in the agenda. The rules or standard operating procedures exist at other shelters I've been at, but there's no need to make them law, because the laws are already on the books, being enforced by our sheriff deputies every single day. Thank you.
Scott, is there anybody to address that really quickly, as to why we're taking this additional step?
Yeah. Part of it was that the law enforcement contractor, the sheriff, in order to cite people, if someone's just thrown out of the camp, they had no ability to deal with them. And if they were thrown out for illegal activity, they could cite them, but then they were free to camp anywhere else. And so, part of it was to provide the sheriff this tool that they'd requested in order to address that. One of the public comments raised, and to answer the question that Councilmember Ferguson had, I wanted to respond to, and that is that, yeah, these rules are in fact different from rules that apply out on the street, because they're intended to address, really, the residency of the inhabitants of this camp, rough as it might be, and rudimentary as it might be. It's an effort to bring to the occupants there peaceful enjoyment that they wouldn't address out on the sidewalk, out on the street. So, yeah, there's lots of things you can't do, and that the public might get away with out on the street, but this is meant to really provide for the peace and welfare of the people that are occupants there. And they've noticed the difference, and it's noted in the record, and will be in our litigation, how about how much better off they are there than they were living ad hoc, just in any public space. So, that's kind of a long answer, but it's not really to criminalize behavior, but really to provide for the peace and welfare of the occupants of there, put more control in their lives, and to have rules of respect for the occupants in there, as you would in a campground.
Okay. So, I'm just going to make one suggestion, and based on comments, the personal lighters, we aren't going to allow open flames, all that stuff, in the campsite. We don't allow smoking. I think, strike that, just because I am concerned about that, but otherwise, and I know there's a time issue, but number four, C4, it says, "Illegal substances of any kind, the following items are not allowed on the property and can be held by security." And then, there's nothing behind it. So, is that just a-
Oh, I beg your pardon, that was supposed to be 4A and 4B, instead of 5 and 6, so.
Okay. So, it's just those two items?
So, you're striking 5, right?
Yeah, I was striking personal lighters, so it would just be-
And then, you're making 6, 4A.
Yeah, you know what? That second sentence of 4 can be stricken.
So, just, number 4 will be, end it period after any kind?
Yes, and then, 6 will become 5. Yeah, it's a good catch.
6 is 5, okay. And 5 is struck. Got it. So, is there your motion, Dan?
That's my motion.
Can I make another quick housekeeping? Scott, on 9A4, page, page 4.
Yeah.
At the top 2 and 3, 3 is bicycles. Bicycles are permitted, not, or will be permitted.
Bicycles are permitted.
Are permitted, so strike B.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, could I? Okay. So, I'll second Dan's motion with the notes connotated by Kathy Ward.
Okay. So, motion by me-
Need you to read it.
As a, okay.
Read the title, please.
I'll get it for you, Dan. Introduce ordinance number 1677, entitled Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, adding section 8.86.050 to the San Clemente Municipal Code relating to the rules for transitional camps, with the notes provided by Mayor Protem Ban and Councilwoman Ward.
Second. So, motion by Councilmember Ham, second by me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay. So, passes 3 to 1.
Report from the Assistant City Manager concerning the proposed Police Services Budget, or Police Services Contract for fiscal year 1920.
Before we jump into this one, Dan, I just want to express my support for the Police Services Contract, as outlined in the past two meetings that we discussed, and I'll be supporting you next year when we look for other ways to add additional deputies, but I do have to go back on duty, so, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
All right.
Great. All right, good evening again, Mayor Protem, and city, members of the city council, Mike Johnston with the city manager's office. The last item before you this evening is the fiscal year 2019-2020 Police Services Contract. The cost for the FY 2019-2020 Police Services Contract with the Orange County Sheriff's Department totals $16,345,966, an increase of $862,737, or 5.57% over last year's contract. In the FY 2019-2020 Contract, there are 53 full-time equivalent positions serving the city of San Clemente, and these funded positions represent an increase over last year's levels, with the council already adding the full-time crime prevention specialist, and then the proposed addition of two patrol deputies. So, the recommendation before you this evening is to approve the contract, and approve a supplemental appropriation of $481,000 to cover the costs of the additional deputies and patrol vehicle. So, that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions, comments, before public comments? All right. So, first is going to be Tony Rubellino, and then Gene James.
Counsel, last session, Eric sent a lovely presentation on how we were going to come about funding additional deputies in the current, or the next fiscal year, and what I noticed was, as you can see by the red arrow there, TOT as the funding plan for the subsequent two fiscal years for adding deputies. And a year ago, I didn't even know what TOT meant, so, I've kind of been schooled over time, but I would imagine the general public may not know exactly what TOT is. So, next slide, what is TOT? It's a transient occupancy tax. It's essentially a tax on hotel stays. And there's a little bit of history there with TOT in San Clemente. In 2016, it was on the, it was a measure to raise the TOT from 10% to 13%, and it failed. And again, it was on the, another measure in 2018, to go from 10% to 12.5%. And the goal was adding approximately $570,000 to the annual tax revenue of unspecified use for those tax dollars. Next slide. So, you can see from the 2016 measure, the no votes had it by only an eight vote split, at which point, a recount was pursued by the city. However, the Orange County registrar of voters shot that down, and we came to learn that a potential recount initiated by the city and then rescinded was going to cost up to $40,000 of taxpayer dollars. And who supported that measure? We have Bob Baker, Kathy Ward, Tim Brown, Lori Donchak, Chris Hamm. 2018 TOT measure, shot down again by a huge margin, almost 3,000 votes. And who supported that? Tim Brown, Chris Hamm, Lori Donchak, Kathy Ward. So, my concern is that we're relying on a TOT which has failed two times in order to fund additional deputies in future fiscal years. If I had a crystal ball, my crystal ball would probably say something like, "Well, here we are in spring, and we're looking for money to fund additional deputies, and TOT got shot down a third time, and we just don't have the funds to do it? What are we going to do?" And I, basically, this shows why so many people have been coming to these meetings over and over, shouting at city management, James and Eric, for a lack of really scrubbing the fiscal plan, and really trying to cut costs, because things like this, we've got these TOT measures that, if successful, will fund the deputies, but the history shows, it probably won't be. So, counsel, I'm asking, rather than wait until the last moment to try and figure out how are we going to fund additional deputies in the future fiscal years, let's start in the fall, and start really scrutinizing spending and the fiscal budget, and start to try and plan, if TOT doesn't pass, what's our Plan B, C, D, E, and et cetera? So, we can also look at things. I'd like to get an update, where we're at with council lunches. I know that's a drop in the bucket, but that would be nice to know, we're not spending tax dollars on council lunches as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rubellino. Next is Gene James.
The budget is done, the contract- The budget is done, the contract, the contract's a done deal, but I would really like to talk to this council about how the public perceives the council's concern for public safety. I think one of the things that was really disappointing for me a few moments ago when we were talking about commissions and committees and that sort of thing, before we got to public safety, we spent a lot of time talking about golf. I'm sorry, folks. You know, we're facing a public safety crisis right now, that could very well morph into a public health crisis. You can't just, we can't just forever allow people living in tents to live in tents, regardless of whether there's outhouse, porta potty facilities or not. We have an obligation, whether we like it or not, to move these people somewhere else. I don't know where that's going to be, but in the meantime, we have this public safety crisis. And if this were a business, if this council was a board of directors, or if the mayor was, Pro Tem was a CEO, we would, you know, if this was the private sector, Fortune 500, privately-held company, it wouldn't matter, management would look at department heads and say, "You got to cut." So we've talked about everything except for cutting. And when we open this shelter, there's going to be a cost to opening this shelter that we haven't thought about, that I hope we've thought about it, but we haven't talked about it. Our deputies are still, once the asbestos is mitigated, or the, our deputies will still be in a substandard station, a station which should embarrass us. And we need to cut discretionary spending, and quite honestly, we probably need to cut heads. If this was a business, this is what, this is what we would do. And it's disappointing from my perspective that we're not talking about that. And the last thing I have to, I have to say is, this thing on PICO, we've got to look at that, and it's scary that we're, you know, that we're talking about it being six months or a year or whatever, but we've got to move on that. Thank you very much.
Hi, Mr. Malmud. Followed by Jim Beaver.
I think the last two speakers said most of what I said earlier, but I asked this council earlier to, and you now have the opportunity to do this as part of this motion, to direct the city manager to find cuts, at least 5% across the board, so that we don't wait for a year, but in August, we could add more deputies. Not one of you said a thing. Nobody said a word. You have the opportunity now to say a lot of words because you have, you took 30 minutes to discuss committees. Take 30 minutes if you need tonight to direct this city manager to find cuts by August. Enough cuts to at least fund six additional sheriff deputies. You can reject them, he can advise you they're unwise, but we pay him a lot of money, and Gene just pointed out what private industry like I had to do when I had to let people go because we didn't have the business to support them. Well, if you don't believe that the priority of this city is deputies, you should all resign tonight, because the other priorities don't matter when we have crime going on. If we have priorities to keep staff over deputies, you people know better. You have to prioritize. Would you allow your home to be broken into if you could just put an alarm system on? You'd cut a cup of coffee at Starbucks if you had to, to put an alarm in your house. And you guys, not one of you tonight, has yet said, "We're going to direct the city manager to find those cuts." If you don't do it tonight, I hope all of you resign, because it's a direction to get information from the city manager. You're not taking any action. I'm not asking you to take any action. I'm asking you to get information. You spent 30 minutes about committees to get information. Don't let us down tonight. Tack on to this bill that the city manager will return in August with at least 5% across the board cuts, or whatever he can do. If he can't get it, get us 4%. So you have funding for all the deputies that we need. And if we can get 10 more deputies, that's better than six more. I don't think there's a single person that's spoken to this council that says we don't need more deputies. Dan, you did a great thing telling us we're going to try to find it next year. Let's find it next year in August, rather than a year from July. Thank you very much.
Mr. Beaver.
I want to thank two members of the City Council who are still here for their efforts in addressing public safety and making the effort to listen to the people and add on more sheriffs, and that's what we need. I was surprised that the cost is about a quarter million dollars to add a sheriff on, and we could have another one if we just did some cuts somewhere, somehow. And we have a city manager that I mentioned before that makes $370,000 from the taxpayers per year. We don't have internal police, we contract out things, we don't have anything that any other city would have, and he has an assistant that by coincidence makes almost the same amount that a sheriff would make. And both of these gentlemen have assistants. And they also have an assistant that's an analyst for the budget. Now, what was so fantastic and so kind of funny, quirky about our City Council is the second part of the public comments, and that's where we get to see the return of our former mayor, who must watch this on YouTube, and he comes back, and he was here last time blasting away at Brad, blasting away at me, and then he said, "My gosh," and then they're attacking the assistant city manager. He oversees the budget, and he does this, and this, and this, and this. And after he got done listing them all, I'm thinking, what does the manager do? If we have an assistant manager who's doing all these things, what is the manager doing? And then to top it off, then he goes, "To say that this assistant manager is more valuable than some cop," and then everybody in the audience moans, and then, and then Bob, instead of lashing out at me and Brad, he lashes out at the audience, and says, "Well, if anybody thinks that, you're not paying attention." And so, kind of fun historical about Bob Baker is, you go back 20 years and you look at the election results, and he is the only incumbent mayor that finished in fourth place. And probably because he comes to the City Council and lashes out at the public because they would, you know, suggest that we lop off some guy who's, you know, at the trough getting a quarter million dollars. When I mentioned that he stole $500 to go golfing, Kathy, you were so keen to whip out a letter from the district attorney saying that exonerated. And I held up a memo, and I said, "Well, where did this memo come from that said, you know, who the employees were that could take off golf in the middle of the day?" And Councilwoman Ferguson asked, "Manager, what about this memo?" And he says, "I have no knowledge of this. I'm not familiar with it." Well, as it turns out, he's very familiar with it because that memo was crafted by the assistant manager for him to give to the district attorney. He knew fully well what that memo was. So if he's willing to lie two feet away from me to his boss, why wouldn't he have lied about everything else to the district attorney, which was that the assistant city manager never got permission to charge $500? You can't charge charity things on the city credit card. For those two offenses, he should be given the boot, and we can have a sheriff enforcing the law rather than an assistant manager who breaks it.
Thank you, Mr. Beaver. Any other common cards for 9B? All right.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Police Services Contract fiscal year 1920 with a modification to the staff recommendation. The first item, to direct the city manager to return in August with 5% cuts across the board.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Wait a minute. I'm going to interrupt you right now. I'm not, we already talked about this, and we were looking at a budget that we were going to approve. It just came back to us tonight. We've already discussed this. If it's going to be changed, we wait for a full council.
We approve the budget already. This is direction to the city manager to make 5% cuts across the board in departments.
Forget it. I'm not going to participate. Is that what you want?
I want you to participate, so better make the motion.
May I continue? Thank you. Number two, approve a budget transfer in fiscal year 1920 for a total of $87,000 to general fund account 001-218-43625, Police Contract Services, with $37,000 funded from account number 001-218-48630, Pers liability, and $50,000 funded from account number 001-617-45700, Major Maintenance Facilities. Number three, approve and authorize a supplemental appropriation in fiscal year 2019-20 in the amount of $40,000 to account number 002-217-43625, Police Contract Services, from the Police Services Grant Fund unassigned fund balance. Number four, approve, that would be number five, sorry, approve and authorize a supplemental appropriation fiscal year 2019-20 in the amount of $267,000 to account number 001-218-43625, Police Contract Services, from the General Fund unassigned fund balance.
So we don't have a quorum now, so I don't think we can act on this, correct? So, but let me just say this. I do appreciate what Councilwoman Ferguson has done, but we've gone through, and this is going to make me the bad guy, I know that it is. We've gone through a budget cycle this entire year. We fought hard for the two deputies that we got, and I think it's unfair of us at this point to be changing the game on the rest of our council members. So let me finish, Brad. I've responded. We fought for the deputies, the two that we got, and the CPS. You've told me to go cut 5% across the board. I've looked at that. I've looked at, we're going to have to cut staff. I've asked all the staff members, who can you lose? I asked Adam Etameen that today because you keep saying we have too many code compliance officers. He totally disagrees with you. I haven't done the analysis of our staff. I haven't asked anybody to do the analysis of our staff. I have no idea what 5% cuts is going to do to all of our other departments. I do know that we have a, we have a police contract here that I thought was a good, a good move. We're now not going to have a police contract for the next month, which is bad, very bad. And that's disappointing. So, I hope Councilmember Ward will come back here, because I'm willing to approve this as it stands, but next year, we are going to ask for deep cuts, and I will, I will face the friendly fire here regarding the TOT tax. We've lost the TOT tax twice because it wasn't dedicated to police services. I heard that during the campaign. The proposal would be to dedicate that to police services, to fund additional deputies, and put it to the public to do that. So, I want to approve the contract as it is and look at what we can do next year to add even more deputies. I'm not going to change the game at this point after we've gone through four months of budgeting. We had our chance to do that, and I'm not going to do that in approving this budget. So, it doesn't matter because we don't have a quorum, and we're not going to be able to act on this, but I wanted to make sure it's known where I stand so that people understand.
Thank you. But that was, the item I added was direction only, to look at our organization, to find operational efficiencies, streamline, and look for revenue enhancements. And all the other items that were included in the motion were starting with approve. This was direct. So, I'm sorry to see that the council member didn't understand that and left, and this has to be delayed, but I think it's very important that we continue to try to right-size our organization so that we can fund deputies to properly protect our community.
All right. So what's the move now, to adjourn?
You're adjourned.
Yeah, your meeting's, we're not in recess, I don't think. I think you've adjourned.
So for all the folks that... All the folks that had the public comments, I'm sorry, but the meeting ends as soon as we don't have a quorum, so.